It's being recorded. All right, so I'm going to call this meeting to order. This is the Saturday, September 28th Select Board Meeting Retreat with the Collins Center. And everybody is here in person and just to let people know this meeting is being recorded. One item on the agenda.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So today we're going to have a little workshop about your organization and how you might do some restructuring. Our mission at the Collins Center was to review for you emerging trends in government, look at what other local governments are doing, and present that information to you. In addition to that, we interviewed your department heads. And your department heads and the Chair of the Finance Committee over a few days, a couple of months, I think in June, and got their feedback on what they saw as the issues in town. We provided you with a report, a memo, a guidance document for today that you've had now for, I don't know, a month or so. And so we're going to start by some introductions. I'm with the Collins Center for Public Management at UMass Boston. My name is David Colton for the people watching this recording. And we, Collins Center's been around for, since the early days of the Patrick administration. And we've worked in almost every city in town, in Conover, Massachusetts, since that time. And we provide a variety of services, from human resources to financial management to this kind of meeting facilitation. And I could go on. And I've been with the Center since 2017, after a 35-year career in local government, beginning with the city of Quincy, where I was Commissioner of Public Works for 12 years, moving on to Milton as Town Administrator, and then finished my career in Easton as a Town Administrator for 12 years. Yeah. So, and I've worked for, I would say, 50 or so municipalities since then, since retiring. So you've seen a lot of what other people do, and kind of what works and what doesn't work, and we'll go from there. I don't know a lot about you, so if you could tell me a little bit about yourself, how long you've been on the Board, what your interests are in being on the Board, you know, kind of why are you here?
So I'm Elena Brugos. I'm currently the Chair of the Select Board. This is my first, third year of my first term, so I was Vice Chair the previous year. So why, like, why am I here? I mean, a lot of reasons. So like, I mean, I am, you know, interested, I don't know, I think sort of the services to the town are sort of like my main goal of being on the Board, but I recognize that like, in order to provide the services to the town, we need to have the infrastructure to actually, you know, the human infrastructure to actually get the work done.
I'm Jason Cooder. This is, I'm a year and a half-ish into my first term. I, I'm here for a few selfish reasons and a few selfish reasons that include the town. So initially, I thought this would be a great opportunity to help, but once I got here, I realized it was a great opportunity to learn. So I've been balancing both those things, trying to learn, to help, really, because physical government's a lot harder than I think a lot of people think, so, including myself. So, yeah, so I'm, my background's in IT, and I do system development, and so system design is something I have a brain for, and I think I can be pretty helpful to the town in that. I am a lot of being part of this town, small town, we hear, you know, living here, what it's like to operate with the town. And I'd like to really increase the caliber of our services, just like Elena was saying, because it just makes everybody live better lives here. And so if we can do that, if I can be helpful in that, I'll be here until I'm not.
I'm Jeremy Stoll, I'm the Town Administrator, started in July. I think I spoke with you about our work, about this project after about a week in. So I think I'm more helpful now than I was then.
You were very helpful there.
So this is my first time administrator role, but I've been in their local government in municipal finance.
So my name is Brendan Chanel. I am in year three. This is the first year of my second term, because I actually got on the Board when we were exploring a five-member Board, so it was staggered basically 10 years. The reason I ran, first of all, I saw an opportunity with the five-member Board to really, you know, kind of get on the Board and help transition from a three-member to a five-member and be part of the change. I also have always been very involved in my local town, starting when I was in high school. My father was always on either Select Board or on the Board. We always did town volunteering, and so that was kind of baked into me from a very early age. So I saw an opportunity, I took it. I am an engineer, mechanical engineer by trade, so I've got a good mind for numbers and, like Jason said, system design. So I feel like I had some skills to give back to the town and wanted to help out.
My name's Mike Morali. I've lived in town all my life. I spent, I'm on my, I guess this is my first year of my second term. I spent a couple of years as Chair. Before that, I was a FinCom Chair for 10 years. I was a part-time cop here in town and next door in Millville for about 25 years. I'm an engineer, an accident reconstructionist, and an investigator. And I was served a couple of terms on the Valley Tech School Committee when I graduated from high school and I went to Valley Tech. So I've been born and bred in this town and really raised by this town. And the reason I have always been involved and continue to be involved is for the same reason all of these other folks are, and I think I spoke to everybody here, but I think I was on the Board before each of you, and I know that Mike, he's going to, not to...
He almost sounded like London.
All right. Very few words to say. I asked, I asked him to please consider running again. And frankly, I'm very excited about the changes I've seen. You know, the town, the Board has grown and the town has grown, and I think it's going in the right direction. Very excited about Jeremy coming on Board and very excited that you're here and KU as well, that, you know, I think we've got, we're finally at a point where we're ready to take another step forward. And we're excited that you're here to help us, to put us in the right direction.
Thank you.
My name is Katie Moxon, the Executive Assistant. Started with Jeremy in July. I never really thought I would enjoy a position in municipal government, and then I worked for the town and then I realized I really enjoyed it, I liked it, and I find it very interesting. I'm here to support the Board and what we're going through in all this process.
Great, thank you.
Mike Goddard, this is, as Mike mentioned, my second go-around on the Select Board. My first one was about 15 years ago. Reason I ran was, I think, part of the transition to a five-person Board. Had I been a proponent, I felt, well, if you're going to push for you, I'll have to fill one of the positions if you can. I think the other reason is that I think Mendon as a town is sort of at a tipping point, where I think we really need to start transitioning from small-town Mendon to more of a professional, more formalized operation and deliver the services everyone's looking for. And my, in fact, I'm retired, but my background is in process management, change management, things like that, so I'm glad we could add something.
Great. Well, thank you all. There's only a few round rules for today. You know, obviously, we want to make sure everybody has an ample opportunity to speak in the discussions that are going to follow and, you know, try to avoid repetition. We, you know, we have four hours, and, you know, that sounds like a long time, but it's really not, and, you know, so hopefully it will go quickly. So we try to avoid being competitive. And of course, nine o'clock, we're going to be, try to be efficient with the time. Okay, so the scope of our contract and the kind of way this retreat was set up is that I would first present the findings and the memo. So I'll briefly go through them, not in any great detail, but I'll briefly go through them. And then we'll discuss some organizational structure options, and we'll think about relating goals and priorities at the end. So the first step we did was the department heads. And I spent two days in Town Hall, meeting with the department heads and the Chair of the Finance Committee. And these were my four biggest takeaways from those meetings. And first of all, your department heads really crave leadership. They feel like they've been adrift. Of course, a lot of that has to do with the fact that you were in, I think you had, what, three interims? Were you, I had two, two interims.
And some gaps.
So you had, it was quite a, quite a long time between the previous Town Administrator, Kim leaving and...
That's my whole term, basically.
Yeah. So they kind of felt a little bit adrift. Part of it, I think, is also that, but in talking with them, that it didn't just start when Kim left. There was a time before she left that they felt a little bit out of touch. And I think that has a lot to do with the nature of the town. Mendon's a kind of traditional small town in Massachusetts, which means it's very decentralized. Government is very decentralized. It's difficult with a Town Administrator who has no direct authority, really, just what the Board gives him or her during the time that they're here. There's no bylaw, there's no charter, there's no, there's nothing written down that transcends Select Boards, right? That kind of continuity. So you weren't, they weren't having things like department heads meetings regularly, people weren't sharing their ideas, it was pretty siloed. So that was the number one thing. These department heads, they really want somebody to lead them. A lot of complaints about facilities. Complaints might be a little harsh, but they feel that Town Hall is not customer-friendly. It was, the space allocation is uneven, the treasury, treasurer collector's office is enormous, and other offices are tiny. And they feel like the way the departments are grouped together is not the best way to do it from a public point of view. If somebody visiting Town Hall who needs to conduct business, they need to go to two different buildings. So they feel it's not customer-friendly. Also, Town Hall probably uses signage. I had, I still have, still, I still don't know where the Human Resources Coordinator Office is. I couldn't find it.
That's like, after two years.
So it's a little, it's a little, Town Hall's a little destructive. Nice job with the renovations, it looks good, but it could use some, some... The Fire Department, the Chief had a lot to say about the Fire Department, its location being too remote, it affects response time, and, and getting away from facilities, he also is having a lot of trouble filling call fire fires. But in the senior center library, both the Directors, both the facilities lack enough space for programs, right? The library is kind of, I think, one, kind of one big open room, not, not what libraries are today, right? They're more multifunctional, it's not just a reading room anymore. The senior center director of course talked a lot about the field override, and other department heads kind of volunteered their views on that override as well. And I was surprised that a few of them actually told me they voted no, which kind of surprised me a little bit. But they kind of felt like the, the town wasn't going through a process to prioritize what facilities need to be, and they felt like it was, you know, because this project moved forward because it could, and there wasn't thought given to other needs. So it needs, there needs to be kind of a vetting process that, you know, people said, you know, they may need that, but I need this more. And I know there's only so much money, and there's only so many debt exclusion overrides that are going to get voted, so we need to have a better process. That was my takeaway from that. Human Resources was the other big takeaway here. The Human Resources Coordinator spends a lot of her time doing payroll. She shouldn't be doing payroll. Most commonly payroll is done in accounting departments. It's really a numbers function. And generally, you have a very paper, you know, focused payroll system, it takes a lot of time. It could use some automation, but even with automation, you still need support staff to do that. The Human Resource Coordinator doesn't have time to do the higher-level functions of the job. She's part-time. Perhaps if she were full-time and had the payroll, she could spend half-time doing other things, or perhaps it should be somebody in your accounting department. You have outsourced accounting to a firm, but you have no one in Town Hall who actually works the accounting department. And you really need to have somebody in Town Hall who works the accounting department, because what happens is the treasurer collector's staff ends up doing accounting functions, and there really should be a firewall between the treasurer and the accountant, right? There are things, you know, the treasurer handles the cash, the accountant handles the books. If those two things get muddled, you're going to run into problems. So I think it's really important to have a physical presence in the accounting department, and that person could just simply be a payroll worker, could also maybe help process vendor payments, that kind of thing, too. But, so that's... Inconsistent hiring practices. You're, like I said, you have a very decentralized form of government. When I was here, the Chief Assessor was on her last few days, and the Board of Assessors was hiring somebody. And that was being done really by the Board of Assessors, right? There was no real support from Town Hall.
It's a third round, David. It's a bit of a third round.
I understand that, yeah, it is a third rail in many towns, but it is, but it is a fact. It is a fact. And, and it's fine to have a decentralized system, and it's fine to have a Board of Assessors make the hiring decision, but the process for hiring should be the same, whether the Board of Assessors makes the final decision, or you make the final decision, or the Chief of Police makes the final decision. It needs to be the same process, and that means it needs to be centralized upon location so somebody has control of the process. So we'll get to Town Administrators more when all of that will file. So the other thing that the, that came to light, no onboarding process. The Human Resource Coordinator told me that sometimes she just, somebody just appears and says, "I'm going to do this," right? "Oh, okay, where did you come from?" You know, that kind of thing. There's no formal, you know, people need to, they need to, there's paperwork they need to fill out, there's, they need information about their benefits and their health insurance and, you know, we have, you know, general policies about how the town operates, so that kind of thing isn't happening. Obviously, you've had a high turnover of employees, and, you know, that could partially be compensation-related. But I also, and the fact that you don't really have a compensation plan, I know, for a sec, and people today, people who are applying for jobs in municipalities, they want to know what the plan is for their compensation. You know, it's not enough to say, "Here's a job, we're going to pay you X." Well, it's X today. What's it likely to be five years from now? What's my, what's my route for advancement? So having a compensation plan helps you in your recruitment, it helps you in the retention of employees. But I also heard kind of a feeling of, you know, some of them went so far as to say, "I feel like we're expendable, like we're thought of as being expendable, are easily replaceable." So people aren't feeling valued in their jobs, and that's also a big part of both recruiting and retaining employees, right? You want to be able to say to people, "You're valuable, you're valuable, valuable resource to the town, we want you to come work for us, and we're going to treat you like a valuable resource through your tenure." And that, there seems to be a bit of a disconnect there. Financial management was the big, last biggest takeaway. Consistent policies and procedures, this could also be as a result of the turnover you've gone through. The annual budget process seems to change every year. Capital planning is not well-organized, as we talked about facilities, and there's really no financial policies. You should have a set of financial policies, none that I could see. Although I will say, speaking with your former Finance Director, it was a little difficult getting a lot of information about the financial operation of the town because of the circumstances of her departure. She wasn't really focused on what we were trying to do. So financial management is the fourth one. So we identified some best practices that can address these concerns in the report, that the Town Administration functions as Chief of Staff with a defined span of control. Formal capital planning process in conformance of Division of Local Services guidelines, it should be established, it's pretty straightforward. Good thing about Division of Local Services, they publish a lot of best practices, a lot of procedures, you can find them online, you don't have to reinvent the wheel. Professionalizing Human Resources Management and follow DLS guidelines during the, and establish best practice during the budget process. There's a whole rhythm of going through a budget year. It has very distinct steps that you need to take at the right time and communicate around them very well. I've not been in town enough to kind of witness that whole process happen, and then what happens at Town Meeting and how it works here, but having that process step, following those steps helps you get to the end, to the end of the day, what you need is balanced budget that people are comfortable with, right? We also looked at trends among some peer municipalities. Now, we selected a group of peer municipalities based on demographics, population density, average single-family tax bill, per capita income. So we found a group of communities that had very similar attributes to Mendon, some of them are close to mine, some of them are further afield in the state, many of them were also kind of decentralized governments, and some we had, a couple in that were just neighbors, just because they were close in proximity. So town charters or bylaws define the powers of Town Administrator. Most of your peers have either a charter or a bylaw, or a special act defining the powers of Town Administrator. You have accepted the law that says you can appoint a Town Administrator, and that's it, right? There's no description. There's nothing, there's no meat on the bones. Peer communities are adopting best practices, as we talked about financial management, including financial teams, financial management teams, consolidating financial functions into a single department, and other practices. Consolidation of public works functions is common in your peers and throughout the state. Formalized Human Resources as their own department in the town government structure is also becoming more and more common. And then, we talked, we didn't talk about this in the findings, but in the, we talked about the findings in the report, but I didn't include it in the summary, but building inspections, inspectional services departments. Half of your peers have formalized inspectional services, inspectional services department, and we'll get into how you, how you think about that later on in the presentation. We also took a broad, we put a broader lens on this and looked at communities that aren't necessarily your peers, municipalities that aren't necessarily your peers, to see what was happening out there. Planning departments, the use of a planning department. You have a town planner, it's... You have a town planner as part of time shared with another town. Many towns have, many small towns throughout the history of Colorado have had town planners whose role was support the planning. The planning board drives the bus, the planner works for the planning board. Very transactional, right? Towns are creating, more and more towns are creating planning departments. This has been very common in cities, but smaller towns are starting to do it now. You, small towns generally have a bunch of committees, right? Citizens committees. One might be involved with historic preservation, one might be involved with housing, one might be involved with economic development, land conservation. You have a community, I know you're a community preservation community, but you have a CPC here. Planning departments are being created not just to do zoning and subdivisions and issue permits, but to support those boards, right? To help them in their mission to create housing, to create economic development and to do all those things.
Is that like administrative services, like grant writing and stuff, or like what type of services?
Grant writing, actually, you know, kind of staffing their meetings and.
Or like organization and then like gluing to the DA and stuff like that.
That's right, that's right. Providing those information, you can do research for them. And then.
And what we've done with conservation, but all the way across the board.
So, you know, people sometimes have, you know, they'll, they'll have a planning director. Larger towns will then have other planners in the department. Maybe a community planner who focuses on housing and historic preservation and support and access, staff support to the community preservation committee. Because community preservation committees in a lot of towns have handled the projects kind of soup to nuts. But community preservation committees, a little bit, some places don't know this and aren't supposed to implement what they recommend. Somebody else has to do that. So community preservation committees often do, you know, they'll, they'll vet the programs, they'll vote them, they'll bring it to town meeting, they'll get the money and then they'll implement it. They're not supposed to implement, they're not supposed to do implementation. And I would argue that these citizens committees of all kinds, it's really difficult for them to do implementation. They have lives, right? They don't work full time for the town. And these projects need oversight and they need to comply with.
And we're experienced, right? We have master plans, we have a lot of plans, and a lot of plans have these implementations. But our execution needs to be supported somehow to actually bring it to life.
And we pointed out to the people who come up with the plans that, just what you said, we need to have a system in place to implement them. It can't be the same system created.
Exactly, exactly. And that's kind of the role contemporary planning departments are taking. They're, they're broadening their scope, they support these committees, they help with the implementation, they help with the research, they help with. Get generating, generating some ideas, they help with the vetting of the ideas, right?
Can I, can I ask, we should say that, you know, the implementation has to be a separate group or a separate entity, separate person. Is that, you know, a recommended best practice? Is there a law in place about that? What is the, you know, what, what makes you say that? Where does the authority come from besides just not being a good idea?
Yeah, no, that's, that's actually, that's actually the law.
That was my, well, that was my question.
That's, yeah, that's actually how the law is going to interpret it. You know, obviously, I'm not a lawyer, you know, any question about legality, you need to talk to your town council. But this is. A common occurrence in small towns. Because they don't have the staff, they don't have any idea of the implementation, the committee does it. And, you know, the, you know, all of the legal requirements for doing a project now. They're quite extensive. Not, not really suited for a volunteer committee. In many cases, in many cases. I've seen towns that have terrific volunteer committees and they work full time and they're, they're on top of it all the time and they do a great job. I'm not saying they can't do a great job, just for that kind of continuity. What happens in small towns with a lot of committees being decentralized, there's changeover, right? So you can make progress to a certain point, then there's a changeover. It's nice to have that staff support to keep the continuity, right? To flatten the learning curve a little bit.
So I get back to Mike's question because I'm hearing two different things now. It sounds like, I feel that I'm hearing more best practice and I agree that the town, normal town operations that are payroll, et cetera. Needs to be in place to support change in the infrastructure, whatever it is going on. Because generally, most of the recommendation to have a home within a board or department within town operations. What you're saying is a lot of small towns will have the volunteer committees do a lot of that work, but the town operations needs to support it for continuity sake. So that sounds different than that there's a statutory separation that's required.
Yeah, for community preservation committees.
Yeah.
It is, it's a requirement by the other committees as a best practice.
Okay, so with CPC, CPC is not doing any, they're just, you know what I mean?
Well, I would, you know, and I would, I would suggest that, that in the follow through, they're involved and I think there's oversight.
Well, there has to be oversight, right? So Anne needs to monitor the funds and the expenses and bring it back and et cetera.
Well, but my issue is, is it, is it that Anne is providing the oversight or is what we're being suggested is that? You know, she can't do the oversight.
The committee can do, committee can do, all right, so let's just.
I'm not saying, I'm not saying, I'm asking the question.
I don't want to get too far into this, this can become a rabbit hole, but.
Yeah, right.
The, the, let's take a, quickly, say CPC gets money to build a new playground. Well, that playground, that has to be bid, that has, that has, somebody has to be on site to make sure it's built according to the specifications. Well, the committee shouldn't be doing that. It's okay for the committee to then review, the committee should then review the expenditure and did they get what they, did they get what they voted, you know, that kind of thing. But it's those implementation pieces, those.
So where I was thinking is, take CPC out, put them aside, but in general, I think we talked about this in our last board meeting, formal program management. There's a professional skill set that actually is designed, people are trained and able to monitor, manage and bring project through from idea to inception, right? I think that's sort of when we talk about recreational fields or the master plan implementation, had your formal, formal program management, then a volunteer committee, I think would be a benefit. To individual contributor type roles within the operation. It's sort of where I was thinking, not so much the monitoring of CPC funds.
Right, right, right. Yeah, but that, you've got the idea, right? It's that, that program management skill that, that isn't necessarily on a committee, right? And even if somebody did have that skill set, they're just one member of the community and they got a job. They're a parent, they've got a family and it's not their full time job to be running programs for the town. Citizen committee should be more about the direction, be more about the policy, right? And you should, you know, they have to make sure that the people of the town's voice is heard in the process of, you know, heading priorities for the town.
I boil that all the way up and ask that it's also not the responsibility of the TA to manage every program, right? So that's the missed, that I feel is like what we've been missing over all these years is the TA only has the capacity to manage so many things. And anything else below that bar happens or not based on the willpower of the group handling it, right?
Yeah, I mean, ideally, your TA shouldn't be doing a lot of program, day to day program. You should have people, you should be directing people, you should be overseeing.
Sure, you should have an executive overview.
Right, yeah, we all have, we're all working supervisors. We have, we have departments of one in a lot of places, so, you know, that boils up to my office too.
That's right. So, I mean, it's fine, you know, you're certainly capable of running a program, projects through to the end from, you know, nuts and bolts, all the nuts and bolts are from A to Z. But if you now, in a year where you've got five, six of these things going on, you know, what, something's suffering, something else that you're supposed to.
We always have five or six things, you know?
Yeah, there's always, but there's always a bunch of stuff going on, but like, the example that I come back to, so I was the capital project administrator for, out of our high school. And that took up half of my time. It was a full time job for somebody else, they left and it just became my job and I didn't have it. If we built a senior center and have a large capital project, of course, we have no PM on board, but it will take like days per week of my time. I can do that, that's great, it's my skill set, I'm happy to do that. And if no one else in town is our capital projects administrator, I think it makes sense that I would drive the capital. If we, there's our five or six things going on, but if there's two of those things going on, like then that.
Right, that's a possibility, right? So, well, like the town, this is what's coming in my mind, like the town checklist, the town hall checklist, you know, that you're going through, this punch list of like projects. Just managing the concept of that and not wanting it to get out of hand because you live and work there as a, just another big project, even if it's a bunch of little projects.
Yeah, I said to Mike yesterday, really, it's me. Punch list gives it like too much credibility. It's a list of stuff.
It's like a discovery.
Yeah, that Dan Byer walked around and said, we need to do this, this and this. But like punch list means like we contracted for this work and we're holding back retainage on a contractor's application because these things haven't been finished. And when your architect comes in, asserts that they are, then it's like, that's, there's like, you know, paint and signage is on the list, right? So, yeah, the signs are.
Yes, yeah. The punch list is a very specific thing, you're talking about how to address these things. This is symptomatic of a larger, had that handled differently at the front end, you would actually have had a scope and a punch list you could create more easily. If you had facilities management as an example, you might delegate to that department head to say, this is in your purview, right? So what are those things that the roles we need to have in town and how do we organize them? You know, almost from the bottom.
And which ones do we get first?
Span I can get.
Yeah.
And with the financial impact, that's sort of going to be obviously at the end.
Yeah.
A big takeaway for us.
Because we can, we can do all these things, it's just it costs money. Everything costs money, yeah.
That's the money.
Right, well, that, the, that.
Right, right.
On the, on the money side, you know, on all of this, you need the foundation in place, right? You're, you're not going to just all of a sudden find the money to do these things. But the first step is really organizing your financial management, adopting, you know, do, we'll get into financial management in more detail later. But until you have the basic foundation and you have policies in place that determine how you handle your money and, you know, what's available for this purpose or that purpose. And how you're forecasting into the future. Until you get to that foundational level of, of, of financial management, it really doesn't make a lot of sense to say, oh, well, let's go find money again, let's go buy like this. Now, it's just start gap.
Just, just as a, an FYI, that was brought to, to my attention, a lack of those policies. When I was the chair of the finance committee by somebody in the collector treasurer's office. And it was met with a great deal of resistance. And the first time that we reached out was actually to the DLS, was to get those recommendations and implement that. In the middle of that, the TA left, we were trying to, so to me, that is the number one, the first takeaway, the first thing that needs to happen. Is we need to have those, adopt those policies, whether the, the DLS, you know, recommended practices or whatever. To me, that's going to be the first step of everything else that we're doing.
Having the policies is, is the basic foundational piece. It also is going to help, what's your bond, what's your bond rating?
Yeah, I'm a four bond rating, so we're double A plus. We're not in the market very often, but it's one of the first thing, if we sell $13 million bonds, one of the first things, you know, we should formalize financial policies.
Right, exactly, that's one of the first questions, and it's, it's a big hit off your, on the checklist.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like, what do you mean?
Yeah.
So Ken, what do you mean?
And in a double A plus community, they, they really expect you to have money.
Right, well, I just want to just trail off on the policy thing and say, yes, yeah, we've, but like, the trouble I feel like we've been having is like, how do we efficiently create and pass through the policy without getting caught up? And then, and not being able to pass, because like we're talking about things by nauseam. And then, I, you know, we are who we are. So, so, so how do we get past that and like make the policy malleable in a way that we can amend and adopt changes in the future without having to go through that pain every time we try to adopt a new policy?
Well, the first time you go through when you do a comprehensive set of policies, right? You adopt the policies, you're the, you're the, you five who adopt the financial policies, right? It's up to you what those policies say. And it's up to you to change them if they need to change. Any area of a policy, it's a policy, it's not, not a command, right? It's a policy. You know, you, you need to be there, but sometimes, you know, you have to have the flexibility to, you know, not quite meet that policy yet, right? Some policies are incremental, it might give, it might set a goal for having a certain percent, a common policy is that you have a certain percentage of your budget in a stabilization fund, right? But you're not going to get there on day one. Built towards it.
We've got more here than we think, I think that's a couple of things. One, we've got a financial policy document that you dug up.
Yes.
We've got guidelines presented from a long term financial committee from 15 years ago. So there are, there are pieces, what we don't do is necessarily follow them. So I think it's more of the practice.
No, no, it's, right, well, no, there is a, and across all those recommendations, there's a stream of communication lack thereof, across all those things.
And that's because people don't know what's happening or what, what is not happening, right? They just, but I think with the financial policies, I think we've got enough of a foundation to quickly cobble something together to understand this is what we should be doing, that practice. What we don't do is we do not look forward. We have no forecasting, multi year planning, and most, from my standpoint, financial management empirical data. There is, I mean, it's there, but it's not put together. So we don't manage finances.
It's not easily accessible.
Finances, right?
It's not easily accessible, but you're right, we have, we, we're actually at the doorstep, they were ready to be implemented. And we've gone around a couple of times, but there was a single point of failure that was stopping it. And I, I think we're finally at a point where we could very quickly implement, implement something that satisfies the requirements that you're suggesting that, well, who am I forbid? You know, we could very easily implement them or pass them, but then as Mike says, implementing them and getting the data to do everything that, that is required, it may take some time, but.
So I want to kind of keep on, there's a whole section of this online, so we'll, we'll get there. I just wanted very quickly to touch on community services departments, that's another emerging trend. To combine departments that deliver direct services to people like senior services, recreation.
And not having rec in public work. And not having rec in public works?
Well, part of this is that the trend now is to divide recreation departments, right? You have a recreation department that runs programs.
Right, right.
For kids and adults and whatever. And then you have more, and you have a facilities department.
Like operations.
Operational department that takes care of the fields, right? So you separate the two. Because, you know, think of the skill sets, right? The people who run recreation programs are not necessarily the best people to cut the grass.
They are in our town.
They do, they, well, he is.
Right, right.
I, I wouldn't say they, cause basically you have one guy who cuts the grass.
Yeah.
Does the whole thing. With some seasonal help. So, that's the trend, right? So you, you, you group all these people who provide services and put them under one department head. Interest of time, I won't delve into that too much. All right, so if you recall, I had you do, I had you all do a worksheet before the meeting. And this is where your priorities showed up, where you ranked your priorities. Financial management was, I had all of you, each of you, so there were six worksheets. Financial management, human resources, programs and services, and were the top three priorities. Municipal charter was last priority for most. I'm seeing that as something you might think of down the road, but right now it's a bridge too far. So, discussion topics. These were the four topics that emerged from your worksheets. Defining the span of control of the town administrator, broadening and supporting human resources management, improving financial management processes, and reorganizing inspectional services. There were others that were mentioned, but these were the ones that showed up most often in the top five priorities that you, that you ranked. So in interest of time, since we can't talk about everything today in four hours, we'll, we'll focus on these four areas. Jared up?
Can you help me understand how each of these four things tied to organizational design specifically?
I'm, can you?
Well, I see financial man, improving financial management processes, that makes sense. That's more of an operational process view and best practices. How does that, how do you tie that back to an organizational design? So I think about succession planning, span of control, things like that. To me, I understand that that feels like the financial management department, so it functions probably, not necessarily financial policies and execution process, you know? Like the firewall would be a piece of that, I think.
Right, firewall would be a piece of that.
But I, so pardon me, it's like, I just wanna make sure we tie this back to organizational design because my expectation is we're gonna have an understanding of the operation, what it could look like in terms of management structure, span of control, setting it up for proper succession planning, et cetera, right?
Right. Right, and the first, the first issue on the list is probably the key to the whole thing. But in terms of financial management processes, there are design elements to that, that we, that we'll talk about.
So, just one more question.
Sure.
What about, so we looked at things presented to us based on feedback. Do we need to have an opportunity to understand, what are those things that we don't do today? That nobody would have given us feedback on because we don't do them today? Like functional roles or, you know, so I think span of control for the TA, we might immediately say, hey, managing earmarks and grants. That's, we don't do that, we kinda do this, we have no idea who's doing what, where and how, right? So, we've talked about that in the past, but that didn't come up because we don't do it, nobody really thought about it except us. So how does that, how do we get those things that may have not been a piece of feedback built into this discussion?
Well, that's, you know, you'll, you'll have to, you know, you'll have to put them.
So you'll let us know when you can throw it.
So I'll, I'll throw a little clarifying on Mike and also ask, like, you know, you've said multiple times we're a distributed form of government, so, so tagging on to what Mike's saying, like, when we imply changes, how do we go and ensure that we're centralizing the government and not further pushing the distribution down into microcosms?
Right. Now, obviously, you, you are a small town, and, you know, I, I'll fall on a limb here. You're always going to be somewhat decentralized, right? You're going to have, you know, small towns don't naturally centralize functions.
But hence the first step of finding the span of control.
Jerry's like, I can't wait, I sleep.
So, from my application, explain to me what, how you, you define decentralized versus centralized within the concept of town, town, small town operation?
Okay, so there are, for example, the, you have boards that, we talked about the board assessors, right? They have a statutory mission, they, they, they appoint their own staff. That's true, you, you, you're not gonna take their decision-making away from them. But you can't insist that they coordinate with the town administrator, right? That when they are hiring somebody, that they follow the policies that the select board has set down around personnel, right? So.
So that's decentralized within influence from influencing some collaboration type?
Exactly.
Collaboration is.
So the policies are really pulling off together. Because all of these, because all of these different boards have statutory authority.
Exactly.
But what we can do as the, as the select board, find the process in how they go about exercising their authority.
Right, so for the sake of this discussion, I would think, I'd wanna suggest we're looking at this more, I, I call it the town office, these are the paid employees of the town. I would think that would be centralized under the TA. How wide that pyramid is, I don't know.
And we have a, we have an org chart that was done by that.
Right, but my point is if, if, for the scope of the discussion, do we, you know, basically focus on that scope along with understanding what roles we actually need to make sure are part of that operations? Does that make sense?
It makes sense, but in some, in some places, for example, you know, in some, some pieces of the town, and you're in charge, first of all, there is no definition of a town administrator. And, you know, the town administrator is what each town decides town administrator want, it is, and what they, what they, what authority they have. But there can be portions of that authority, you know, say around, usually we're talking about human resource, around human resources management, where there needs to be a lot of collaboration with people who have authority that the town administrator doesn't have. But that collaboration is key. But in, in, in other areas, there are departments where the town administrator is the, is the ultimate authority. Talk about collective bargaining. You want the town administrator to direct collective bargaining based on a strategy that you develop in executive session, and you give him, you, you work together and you get a strategy, he takes that strategy, he goes to the bargaining table, and he should be doing that for every department, every, every union. And there's no statutory reason he can't do that. So, so there are things where you can make his authority very broad, and there are things where it's more limited.
And it feels like you throw out there and then you allow statute, like you have a strong chief. So there might be some things in terms of hiring, firing that the TA would not have authority over. But in general, we're just saying, we want the TA to be in charge of all disciplinary hiring, firing of employees. And as a general statement. And then we can shave it down from there and say, well, what does that mean? And how, how can that be practically implemented, given the structure we currently have of the, you know?
Right, right, and, you know, you, you, solid language and, and whatever method you want to employ to, to define his soul. So we're ahead of, okay.
We're rolling the business.
Okay. So these are ten common attributes of a town, of a town administrator. These aren't all of the attributes, but these are the, these are ten, ten very common ones that appear in all, that appear in town charters, that appear in special acts that set up town administrators, appear in policies. So, on the first one, I wanna call your attention to, this is about, this is about managing the activities of departments. Supervising management manages and coordinates all activities, departments, committees, employees, under the jurisdiction of the select board. So, anything that's under your jurisdiction, the town administrator is in charge, he's, he, he, you know, everybody in those departments reports ultimately to him, right? And then the second half of that, he, he coordinates the activities of departments and committees under the jurisdiction of other elected officials, boards and commissions. They're not managing them, but he's coordinating with them. And it's perfectly, it's a perfectly sound way to do it, right? Now, if this were perhaps in a bylaw, everybody in those committees that aren't under your jurisdiction would have, would now, by bylaws of the town, have to coordinate with the town administrator. Right, so, that's nuts and bolts, how you, how you do that.
So I say yes to number one. What are the, what are the enforcement mechanisms of whatever we put together?
Well, you know, that's difficult, when you've got, especially when you've got, if some of these boards and committees are elected. Unfortunately, it relies more on soft power than hard power, right? You need to.
So it's more about our social environment and our culture?
It's more about your social environment, your culture and your ability to communicate.
Okay.
And, and your ability to work, work with people, right? You can't be hard-nosed. When you've got another elected board that has authority and now the bylaw of the town says they have to coordinate, well, they're gonna, they're gonna, they might define coordinate very narrowly and you might define it very broadly, and that's where the art of governing comes in, right? You have to.
So that's just the negotiation portion of the relationship?
Exactly.
And I think this is actually a great slide, we could probably spend some time here.
Yeah.
Because when you look at this, I think, I look at it and say, wow. Jeremy looks at this and says, whoa.
Yeah, where's my system?
No, but what this does, it starts to get to where, where my head's at, is that, okay, if we say, these are the, this, we're gonna put this into a charter or a bylaw, this is the role of TA, the discussion would then go from saying, one person can't do this, so how do we set up the rest of the operation to allow the TA to actually provide oversight and accountability? You're still accountable, Jeremy, if you do all those things, but then what do we need to do to allow you to, you know, effectively manage all of this?
We have to enable them to be able to do that.
But it speaks to the, you see the bullet, bullet, HR. Right, well, yeah, okay, that's, is that a department, is that, how does that work? You look at, you know, preparing warrants for town meetings and things like that, and I, I look to my left and I say, I'm sure Katie's gonna be, our goals would be that, you, you own that, right? That's why I like this, is because I, I'm looking at this saying, well, financial management, HR, it's all here, and if we think this is a good starting place, I'd love to kinda dig into this to understand, well, what's the practical implications of us saying, the TA, Jeremy, is responsible for all this stuff? How does that work?
Right, how do we enable him to be able to do that? Well, you, you know, you enable him, you can enable him through policy, you can enable him through bylaw, you can get a special act.
Well, I'm thinking more.
Well, I'm thinking about implementation. What resources do we need to provide him that he doesn't have now so he can effect, do that?
And I would look to say, Jeremy's sitting here to say, when you look at that, you're, you're coming up to ninety days, right, in a couple of weeks, right? What's, does that scare you? You should say yes.
No, it's, it's exciting, so.
It's exciting.
One, the, you talk about soft power, and that's my, my joke, since I've been here, that the only power I have is don't make me go tell mom and dad. All I got, so adding some teeth to it has been important to me. I think the culture is pretty good in terms of adherence to what people perceive me to be administering all departments and stuff like that, I think there's a pretty good base there. I do think the interaction with electeds, we have an elected parks commission, who then appoints the parks director, one of the parks commissioners is the parks director.
Yeah, I know that, yeah.
I asked him for his, if he ever had an opinion from ethics on that, and he's digging that up for me. There's a library board, there's a planning board, so there is a lot of that. Even with a well-defined bylaw, there's going to be some areas that rely on the culture and all playing the same team. That's okay, that's part of it. So that's kind of my thoughts on one, two, that's within my skill set, you know, coming from my background, but there's trends in the types of folks who are applying or, you know, getting town administrator roles. It used to be all finance people. And then there was more of a, you know, it could be trends in public safety, but as the NMA was talking about, TA has shifted kind of towards the social services, constituent services, communication skill sets as folks becoming town administrators. So I wanna make sure that this is set up, not for Jeremy, but it's set up for men and the TA. So I can be the chief fiscal officer and do all this. I was, regardless of, you know, the staff that was here, I was planning on being deep in the budget myself.
That's a question, so I can do this. So, so literally you are doing it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm going to do the budget.
For this year, but in, when you talk about setting the town up for a future TA, and he's to say, and delegates. But yeah, I just wanna make sure you have the support structure in place to allow you to do that as well as other things. So the more you dive into the weeds, the more I get concerned about a set of single points of failure, you know what I mean, like, we need to build up the bench strength and things like that.
So, so, I'm sorry, go ahead. I just was gonna say, what, what he said, I'm going to do the budget, that's what Kim ended up doing for several iterations. So it's continuing, but I think we need to get away from that. So, so, just following what you said, Jerry. When, when I became a town administrator, I came with a bookworks background, which was unusual at the time, not as unusual today, and when I became a town administrator, there were a lot of schools being built and a lot of, you know, a lot of infrastructure being built, so my, my skill set was helpful. But I was still the chief fiscal officer of every town I worked for. And it's, let's differentiate between fiscal officer and financial officer, right? You're not the, you're not the finance director, but somebody has to be ultimately in charge of the fiscal health and policy and direction of the, of the town. That's the select board, the town administrator, with some advice from the finance committee. So, just because it says you're the chief fiscal officer doesn't mean that you're.
Right, I'm not doing a payment voucher, it's all right, you know.
But, and I'm not, no, no illusions, I fully expect you to be the primary on the budget process this year because we, we need to do that.
Also, it's the foundation of everything we do, and I don't think I can give, you know, advice or insight into we should do this or we shouldn't do this without like a deep understanding of.
Fair, fair enough, but I think longer term, when I think about the design, this would be where I'd say, okay, in the future, do we want the TA to be running the budget development process or providing input and guidance on the budget development process that the X role is actually on the ground, meeting with department, you know what I mean? Just wanna be, make sure that, I'm looking at succession planning, because our whole struggle right now in the last eighteen months is lack of succession planning, we did not have people in a place to step. We got lucky, I mean, Jody did a good job last year, and, but I don't think she was involved in the process the year prior. She learned it and did it in one process cycle, you know what I mean? So I just wanna make sure we're.
And then we didn't pass that on.
And so. Well, no, we were, we were positioned, but then we kinda had nutrition, you know?
One of the key things in, in terms of financial management, you're talking about structure and succession planning and having people available, is to create a financial management team. um, is to create a financial management team, but you need to operate a team. The, the town administrator is the chair of that team, the head of that, you know, the leader of that team, but, you know, you're a treasurer collector, you're accountant, you're assessor, um, all need to be part of that team and be contributing. Um, the other problem about frankly with succession planning is you don't have any, you, you, you don't have staff. I mean, you have one person, you have a lot of one person in the box, stuff to plan succession, but there's nobody, nobody on the bench, right?
Right, you know, so. Which is, it gets back to, do we need roles? So whether you call it a finance director or an assistant town administrator or, I look at this, I, we need a senior level management team that can start to, whether it be an HR director that has broader screen, you know what I mean? I just think we need to beef up our management team outside of the data data department.
Small towns, small towns are, or in more, and I think it's quite common, having an assistant town administrator who is slash something else. Assistant town administrator slashing resource director, slash finance director. Um, so it, it, and the reason for that is, uh, yeah, one big reason for that is succession planning, right? Now you have an assistant town administrator in place who's developed a particular area of expertise, whether it's finance or resources, who now can step in, right?
And Kerry loves it here, he's on here forever. But and help develop career, career pathing, so it goes both ways. You've got somebody who can step in at a senior level, but you also got more hands that can help develop and provide value to our associates in their career path.
And the other thing that makes it difficult for you to do through succession planning is you don't, you don't really have an HR craft, right? Who's, who's, who's doing training? Who's, who's, who's coordinating this professional, all this professional development you want to do? You know, if, assuming you have the people in places to accept the training and to participate in the professional development, well, who's, who's crafting those programs?
Well, in putting, well, you know, that practical lens on this, for anyone who watches this video in the future, we're not gonna have ten million departments that do each one of these things. We are gonna have to think about, how do we create a structure that allows us to move forward in these different areas? There might be a lot of slash and some creative. Yeah. How do you drive cross-training, right?
Do you think we'll ever have any non-working managers?
Like?
Oh, no.
Right? Like, isn't everybody always going to be doing like two things or until the, till this place doubles?
Well, probably, yeah, but there is, there are certain things. I, I keep, I keep going back to the, I would keep using the HR coordinator as an example. She can't at a part-time level be the HR coordinator and do some of the things that, we're talking, we've got more slides on that. But can't do that and spend fifty percent or seventy-five percent of the time doing the payroll, physically doing the payroll, right? Somebody needs, you need to, it's okay to have a department that is working and doing some of those tasks, but, you know, they can't do everything.
Yeah, we need to allow them to do their jobs, right? So even, you know, when we're talking about the finance team and the lack of clerks and we, you know, the direct former director basically says, I've got to man, man the window. I said, I don't want my finance director necessarily planning, supporting the window. But she's doing that because they didn't have the clerks in place to man the window. So we have a great, we have a great team that makes sure things get done.
Yes.
I think our responsibility is to make sure they're supported in a way that they can do their jobs for what they're accountable for and still serve the community, you know what I mean? So I think.
Yeah, from both the top down and also bottom of support. So eh, number two on the list, the budget process for the, for the town administrator. One of the advantages of having a town administrator do that is the town administrator, by going through the budget process, by becoming intimate with that budget, by meeting the department head, understanding how that budget works, budget to a town administrator should become second nature, right? You, you should be able to, uh, without looking at a spreadsheet, know approximately how much money is left in the overtime account of the firecracker, right, at any given point in the year. You should be that intimate with the budget. And what that does is that helps the town administrator see where the holes are. Put recommendations before you meet, before a town meeting to build that support, right, to build that organization. You have need to, the building an organization oftentimes starts with understanding the fiscal condition of the organization and the budget. Like, that's key. So to try to say, the town administrator, you're gonna hire, you're gonna go hire a finance director and they're gonna do all the budgeting, the town administrator's not gonna be involved, I think is a mistake.
I don't think that's being said. Ultimately, from my standpoint, Jeremy, the TA is accountable for all of that. Now, I'm looking for the TA, this Jeremy, to say, this is who you, that's my, I agree, I'm going to him for answers. Now, if he's got people doing the work and managing the work, God love him, within the budget, but yeah, he's ultimately accountable, there's no doubt. Even if we have a finance director, that's a part of a team that you're ultimately managing.
Yep.
Right?
Yeah, and right now I rely on, you know, because the finance staff is thin, I rely on the accounting team for a lot of stuff, for, you know, running reports for me. And um, that's, that's been one hurdle for me. I'm not, I've never used Springbrook, our financial system before, so just trying to navigate through that has been um, a little bit, that's a very short-term problem, but I've been relying on accounting. And while they're quite responsive, um, it is a little frustrating that, around the building.
Right.
And um, that our treasurer, our assistant treasurer collector at the time was putting together payment vouchers and scanning them over to accounting, which was the only person in the office. Um, and that's kind of not how you want your treasurer collector spending time. So I think one of the, you keep coming back to the HR piece, but I think one, one key way that I anticipate us having and hope we can act on soon is a clerical position in, um, that supports, um, the town clerk and the treasurer collector's office. Um, our town clerk has a nine-hour-a-week position who, she's retiring after the election in December. Um, so I think, you know, at the same time, you know, the town clerk's office was closed for large slots this week. She was at a training two days and on vacation two days, uh, because we don't have that support. Um, specifically on payroll, starting the third, the second week in January, we're going to a bi-weekly payroll instead of a weekly payroll, and it will be online time in attendance. Um, so hopefully that'll cut down on a little bit of the time.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, but it's still, you know, it's still data verification. The other thing that we need in HR too is that, you know, there's no like auditing approval process. So um, I, I, I think our HR coordinator does a great job. Um, I came to her on Thursday and said, you know, the town hall union, um, town hall union contract was approved last night, you know, please update the wages for the next payroll. And she's like, oh, I did that. I was like, oh, great, like, you're so on top of it. And then like two days later, I was like, wait, I, I never clicked like approve, like who, who audited this? Who, you know, made sure you put in the right wages, who made sure you didn't double your salary, like, you know, that kind of stuff. So that additional level of um, kind of clerical piece of data entry and data validation.
Yeah, you're, you're, that's, that should be handled between your HR and your accountant, right?
So pulling payroll and giving it to that, that's kind of what.
So uh, you know, H, HR, we talked a lot about HR, um, the uh, town administrator often has overall responsibility, um, it's the A, it's a personnel bylaw of the town. We, you don't have a personnel bylaw, right? Uh, I would put that on my list of things you want to get done, right? Some kind of.
Just finally add a policy first, right?
Well, the personnel bylaw will tell, will say, who has the authority to write the, the policies, right? And who has, who, who does the classic conversation plan, how that gets done. Um, traditionally in Massachusetts, small towns have had personnel committees. We don't recommend them anymore because citizens committees shouldn't be involved in confidential, like matters, right? Um, so uh, there are lots of examples out there in personnel bylaws, um, but I, you know, I think that's one thing you need to. Um, along with this, so I have a, um, get off this for a second. I'm gonna do a little exercise, so you don't have to listen to me all the time. I'd like to do is, uh, if you, the six of you could partner up with somebody, right, in three groups of two. And I have, I've divided, um, I've divided those ten attributes up, or at least nine of them. Now, one, in the, in your small group, to talk about the three attributes that I've given you. And then come back and tell us what you think, uh, based on those questions or any, anything else you think is important. But, but yeah, so we, you know, this will help us drill down into those attributes a little bit more. Now, Pierre?
Yep.
Okay, so who's gonna, I guess, do? You, to Mike?
Yeah, Katie can hop in with those guys.
Uh, you wanna hop, you wanna hop?
No, I was saying Katie can hop, hop in on whatever.
Yeah, she can, yeah, yeah.
Um, you're saying Mike needs to move over here.
Right.
That chair right there.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna call you group A. You guys are group B. And here's group C.
Right.
Um, yeah. So you can, uh, I tried to group these with, you know, one major attribute and a couple of smaller ones. So you, you know, just spend a lot of time on all of them, but if you only have time to spend on the major one on your list, that's okay. Um.
And answering these five questions.
Yeah, and use those questions as a guide. I don't, I don't mean for you to, you know, go one all the answers. Use those questions as a guide to uh, help, help your discussion along.
It is.
All right. That's what everything has to say, so.
Yeah.
That's.
So why do I like it?
Can't do anything without.
Yes.
Cause you have somebody and so.
Like it avoids scale.
Basically, the town can't.
Organize everybody hitting the same direction.
Like having this.
Yeah, like.
The grid. The structure.
Yeah.
The human resources.
It's that old, it's that old Kevy thing.
So.
So like this is the interesting thing, like this, this is. It's like.
Right.
And that's how should the select board interact, TA, and like arguing.
I guess. Get guidance about, yeah, strategies and expectations.
But not.
Yeah.
Feelings. It feels awkward.
You just found a computer.
Yeah, it's like one.
Tell me that. But kind of overall, you know, it's important here, it's the board officer. The individual contributors, so. I mean, extract that. That's the thing, support. More needs to be evolved.
Right.
Dislike about.
So, right, so that would be a little.
Dislike.
The thing I dislike about all of Jeremy is um, not being around for the context. If.
Sorry, who got?
Yeah, I mean, he's like, so like, if he's, the TA is doing all this, right? It's like, we're not around for the context. They have to come back and explain the cause of the content. Situation, and we have to understand it actually, not, Jeremy.
You know, you're right.
That's just, you know, he's the voice chief.
And the other one is too, like, this applies to.
But I, but I think this, this, yeah.
So that's.
Like they don't. So sometimes town employees also.
Not that I go around. One.
So much of that is, so, right, right.
Right, that was.
Yeah, so then I had two department head meetings.
So there's like the benefit of the weakness that you're saying is you have to be directly involved and therefore politics doesn't get in the situation. It's all, also, by not being.
Two, two examples.
So, and without hearing the context and without seeing what the, you know, whatever is being argued. Hearing our.
Right.
Yes, and it's all telepathy and they have to trust.
Right.
That we're, that we have told him the truth and that he was.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a key point, is like trust me.
So uh.
I think it's really the.
I think, I think that you're.
The same.
By the way, I.
Correct, right?
All right.
And believe that they're.
Right.
You know, talking to each other.
It did it.
Right, so like, like.
Dislike.
So, yeah, I mean, I guess.
They have their own.
I went to, I went to this, um.
But they, they took it as like, hey, this is what I did. I don't know if you saw.
It's in the same.
Managers, yeah.
But it might be a good foundation.
You have to say. Cause humans in general. You know, whereas managers.
In clear.
So I think that the manically.
Cause we, we should be.
It's like they should.
Like that's the thing.
Undermining who's.
Right, exactly, like supporting.
And how that happens.
Um, so.
Exactly.
Like, do they know they can't talk directly to the select board?
Outside of that thing, like, do they know?
Yeah.
Right, that they.
I see.
To. Like this, I mean, that's.
It's like, you know.
What I like about it.
Underlying, but anyway, I feel like, yeah.
Right, yeah.
And then everybody else.
The directors.
They can't do that.
On the round. But it's like a skip.
It's not gonna happen.
We, we're not gonna have.
Oh, like, like a gaming thing?
No, no, so skip level for manager.
Okay, but.
For managers, manager.
Oh, okay, I see.
What things are bothering you? How they can, that manager can't, your manager do a better job.
Yeah, I, I hadn't.
Management tree. Skip level, and so reverse skips, the employee going to upper management, getting the TA, and having the opportunity, which they do by law, have the opportunities. Company partners.
Right, right, but yeah, I mean, that's.
To be that.
Yeah.
That's a good point.
Do you think?
Although.
Something like that. Establish trust.
And I also think that's the same thing for this.
Yeah, you're right.
Right around. But like the same thing we're working with the town council.
You know, and then.
Yeah, and right, that's both ways. Uh, now, what's left, what's left, how they might react, talk, so.
Right.
We have policies around.
And I think, right, and I think like we as a board.
And I would ask.
It would be helpful if we. Was dealing with it because I don't feel like.
Well, it's statutory every time.
I don't think there's.
And, and it's like, and so like it's.
Elegance is, yes, using the. Even if it's, even if it's the smallest. So Karen also means like disposition.
So, um, I think it would be helpful.
I would give number two is.
We have to be specific.
That's.
That's, no, but I don't even know if you're budgeting. Like, and prioritizing the budget for. Players' time in the right places. And it's, it's. It's all about, it's, it's all about, like, reporting. I don't like. It's. Yes. Somehow. And the only time we interact is council. I wouldn't want to eat in our council, so we're not gonna have an office. She has clearly. That's counter. During. For the well settled. And what about administers that?
You want to.
Yeah, you manage, so it's contracts. So.
If the TA is.
In the year now, I've been here. Were a lot of that was taken care of by departmental, again, the finance. And then whatever the department had reinforced. It was dealing with the insurance issue, right? It's like a trifecta. Sure, counting some. Right, so, I know some, some come up, but just like events. Um, I think it only comes to us when we have a this, uh, uh, obstacle. Objection, a legal obligation to make that decision, to make sure. I don't see there's, whether, like, how many times we're being.
Right, right, so, like, yes, so, like, I guess, like.
Well, that's, I think that's, to your point.
It's more than just health insurance. Health insurance are. That's what you administer. But, um, it's more about, like, large knowings against the town. But.
I mean, we're, well, we're here in some simple.
All possible. It is.
But it's. Yeah.
Why do you?
So, like.
The Phil.
So he sent me the.
Setting the.
The NGR that we accepted.
The insurance.
That's right.
By the committee. And I'm like. I'm not gonna have this look related to all of that as well, like, you don't.
So, like.
I'll introduce it really if I can. Saying that we need to deal with. Um, just any other stuff.
Right, well, that. But that, that relates to, like, well, human resources, because, um.
Which is why I did that.
Basically, we didn't. It's that, well, delicate dance.
I think what's happened is.
But, yeah, I mean, it's, yeah.
TA would ignore.
Well, but, yeah.
It's, it's, right, it's, it's. Risk is more like legal.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and are we? Are we? Like, are we ensuring building from risk? I know. A T C over here. So this guy, right, person. Come to. Then it's a whole back summer.
But like.
It's not afraid.
Right, I mean, that's the thing, it's like.
If we're going out, there needs to be support.
At all, please. I love.
Here, here.
I mean, no, I mean, I guess, like, the executive system can help.
That's where she's. Uh, someone should be somewhere. But maybe it's sticky, like, time, or you would. And a person.
Her.
Their five.
They're strengthened or weakened, they all need to be strengthened.
I guess they. They also.
Also, weekend, like, we can never win the super final.
Yeah, for the big stuff, right, like, you don't need to get in the thread where it's like.
Right, if you had to take a theme on this, it's a person. It's a combination. That wherever you were to put these, you'd be sort of planting some other. Right, activities for a prioritization activity and not, like, a she, this.
Exactly, most work.
Number two.
And so these are related in that. To me, it's vague, you know, collective marketing is personnel.
So.
It is a, it isn't always, oh, it's because of personnel. Something a lot.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're.
Yeah.
Make a lot. Is that about, uh, language or document programs? Or is that about private, about she, what's due?
I mean, those roles, I mean, because they're, they're having.
Like, it suggests that. Right. It suggests that. And just that strip.
Yeah, so there's, right, so there's, right, so.
So it's a shared responsibility.
Like, all, you know, so many.
Right, which comes back to how, how are they allocated across?
We think we got that one beat.
Because they're being used. Probes.
That's right.
But I, but I don't know.
It is, and I mean, I guess that's what happens. I mean, I guess. And that's sort of like.
But, yeah.
With these assumptions that, you know. Well, and I think.
Exactly. Uh, number three, I think, we like.
I mean, that's a good question, let's keep it going back. Starting with their jobs, energy. And decide on their jobs based on exact orders.
Pairs.
Since that's been like.
Yeah, I mean.
Yes. More right, first time of department review.
Right. Right, so. So, like. Well, we try to do it.
Central.
For some day, a lot of times.
Yeah, so the thing I think we skipped for a lot of this, it's like, how do we?
Into any specific departments.
We present ourselves for all these. Competition.
Dislike about handling those.
Sorry, we're being.
We finish first, so we don't, not that it's. Wow, you get a free muffin.
You got three people.
That's true. You know how hard it is to break. Would you make real difference to you? No, because you have a witness to break the tie. She's, she's not breaking it, now she's participating.
Okay, so, like, looking at these questions, so, like, why is it? Answer one. These are all critical.
And criticality.
These are all critical for the functioning of the town. But for the towns, financial.
And it's for creating the culture, because without it, it's. People are very sensitive about money. I said, what I dislike.
Yeah, maybe we should not. Were we doing?
Yeah. But I couldn't find one.
Oh, an easel in the.
Yeah, I guess, right, there is.
Well, there's actually in Jeremy's office.
The unknown, unknowns.
Was an easel.
Not that no, no.
Like, what, just, we, right, so, good. That's still the one we think we used the last time.
Yeah, I keep, I keep that up with the goal.
I think they're all ready to. I think it's, they all, all. That's, that's, that's how they were starting.
Yeah, because, you know.
They don't, these officers don't belong to anybody right now.
Yeah, ultimately, we all did.
But I guess I'm, I'm.
We've been.
Defining, I'm just trying to, like, process for that, it's like, defining an attribute, like.
A little bit too verbose to say. How we do.
I guess, I'm gonna, I'm gonna skip one. But in terms of strength, we should, I mean, I think the strength.
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, that's.
In, in a way, it sounds like right again.
Yeah, we don't want to. You know, right.
The policy.
Only thing. Okay.
At least, like, whether it's, you know, a new person.
I'll never start. Yeah, keep it on.
All right, well, let's start, let's start with the group initiative first here, Group A. So, Group A had the supervises, managers, and coordinates all activities departments, the kind of the overarching one. Managers oversee the use of maintenance, repair, security of all land, buildings under the jurisdiction of the board. And serves as the board's chief advisor on a range of matters. So. Let's start with the first one, which is the big one, what? Why is that, why is that so important?
So, without this, there would be chaos. That's the name, like, that avoids chaos. Chaos, it innovates and drives collaboration, but it does not mean at, like, the tiered micromanage.
Okay, so, so it avoids. You know, avoid chaos. And you're going to, you, you second one, you said, you had a great word there.
Collaborates.
That's right, or just collaboration, encourages collaboration. But doesn't micromanage. Right, doesn't.
Correct.
Yeah, that, that really came out of the statements, it's fairly broad in terms of the definition supervised, managed, coordinating. So we ultimately got back to the point, said, well, yeah. It's not gonna micromanage, it's gonna manage and be accountable. That's the other thing, is we have a single point of accountability for these things. But he's not gonna be doing the day-to-day activities. And I'm only saying he, because I'm looking at Jeremy. Are you thinking that that accountability is what causes the micromanaging, so you want to explicitly call it out, or?
Well, I, I think what we wanted to do is, when it said, what would you define this attribute more or less broadly? That's where we're gonna cut up there, I mean, it's, yeah, they can't micromanage. Okay. So, what, what, what would, how would you, how would, what would you do? Anything you do to strengthen this, or do you think it should be weakened, should it be stronger?
I mean, some, we, we didn't get to resist the strength that it might be to put some more color around what it means to supervise, coordinate, and manage. Practical examples. And possibly, in my mind, I would delineate which functional roles fall into that.
Because I'm going to direct more of the day-to-day of HR than I am.
Yeah.
You know, like, I'm gonna say, Jen, I want you to focus on, you know, this for Japan, I want you to go out again on health insurance. Whereas our, you know, I want to be able to offer these other plans, how do we get there? I'm not gonna tell Dave what, you know, beats to be on, right, it's so eerie, it's different.
But I think what you said really encapsulates the micromanaging, in these, you're not saying, I'm gonna update the document, but you are. Identifying a end state we need to get to, and you're delegating the work to the appropriate roles within the operation.
So, it's great, is to mention the fact that you're, you know, coordinating the, the other people involved. To indicate that you're not doing it all yourself. You know.
Trusting in professionalism.
I, I wouldn't want to put anything, though, into writing that said that Jeremy never contributes to police. And always contributes to a job, like, just because that's the way it is now, doesn't mean that sometime in the future, future chief might want you to be more involved or less involved, whatever the case may be. And it would be statutory reasons you can or cannot be involved. Oh, I should. Right, yes. But it's like, you know. Agreed, right. Yeah, I think with each one of these things. Creating the movement. To David's earlier point, we want to make sure there's, there's a level of flexibility to, you know. Manage tomorrow like we think we manage today, you know.
So. My crude little drawing here. You have your TA, your town administrator bylaw, right up here, that. Kind of a broadly says, defines what the town administrator's role is. What you ideally should have is you should have a series of bylaws or policies beneath that that support that, right? So you have a personnel bylaw that then gets into that detail. It says that, you know, responsible X, Y, Z in, in human resources. Which. Puts a color, to me, me not call, on what this does, right? You have financial policies. And let's say, let's say what the TA's role is, what his responsibilities are. More specifically in finance. And you like, procurement policies. So, and, and you'd have, you'd have a whole series of things that support that plank in the TA. What about some of the other attributes? That you have in the list?
In terms of, like, the, you had one, two, or three, are you talking about speaking of number five with the Westerns?
Yeah, number five would be a good one, that would go for you.
We haven't gotten into this, my perspective on this, I think this came out across all three of the items we're talking about. The select board in my mind is. Receiving information or being informed as opposed to executing or engaging in any of that. How I see it.
And then across all three of these, what we thought, all three, was it prevented and runs around.
Primarily number two, we're gonna get to that.
But there are, but there are times when we'll have, you know, individuals, especially probably more since. I mean, I've been around for the longest, I'll have people who have my phone that were calling me about something, and I would tell them, well, have you talked to the TA about this? And went, well, no, I'm talking to you. And I think all of these, in this first area that we worked at, all of them by designating that. You know, kind of tamps down some of that to let them know, this is for, for us too, you know. Look, this is, this is, everything goes through that office, through the TA's office. Yeah, I mean. Department heads. Employees, police officers, whoever, shouldn't be talking to you. Right, I mean, they shouldn't be talking to you, you know. I lie, I lie, and I used to see, how's the family, but other than that, they shouldn't be talking to you, right? You, you wanna, you wanna be cautious, but you shouldn't be discussing. Matters that have to do with the administration of the town with individual employees, you should be discussing them.
Yeah, the one, the one area, and I think it came, I noted it in a, for an faulty document. If there is an issue at the, with the TA, not saying there is, the board does need to facilitate resolution.
Of course, yeah. But it has to be specific to the TA, or the TA, I went to the TA and, um. You know, I, I, I wasn't satisfied with what he, what he told me. He did something inappropriate. Went to the TA and he commented on belinking my skirt. Right? That kind of thing.
Do we declare that we're the ombudsman for the town in, like, uh. In the, the bylaw that would be generated to, like, how is, how is that act, that ombudsman activity right there? Part, like, where does that sit? Is that part of what the TA's job is and how we associate with it? Or is this a higher level function of how the town itself runs outside of, you know, the board and the TA individually? Like, where do we put that sort of conflict resolution portion of the job?
Well, you can't, you can't write that into a bylaw, obviously, you know, you have a conflict resolution process. I mean, it's up to you to define it.
I mean, practically, this is the state law, just by the fact that we are the select board, that we're the.
Well, there's a problem with that, and just saying, well, the select board will resolve the conflict. You want to have a process in place, so.
Sure.
If it's a conflict. Everybody, everybody's conflict gets adjudicated in the same way, right? So.
Yeah, union contracts are great in that, you know, there's the grievance process, there's an alternative dispute resolution, and we kind of don't have that ADR piece for general government.
That's something that you could do as a policy, you could have, you know, Jeremy could do some research and write up a policy, I'm sure, on conflict resolution. And you'd argue that's a policy.
Less, less formal, like, not con, for conflict, as many. Definitions potentially or contexts to it. I would look at it this way. And this is where I was going, is TA is, that role's accountable for executing the board's strategy. If execution and projects and programs are not being implemented at a rate or a, we're not garnering success. And that's because the collaboration aspect does not seem to be working very well. That's where I say the board can step in, full part. That's where I say the board can step in, pull parties together and kind of try to move things forward. That's sort of.
Right, and the other piece of that is.
I think we had an example of that this way, you know, the town hall project.
Does, does, does he have goals, formal goals? He will.
He's got ideas.
So your role, you're select board's prime, what's the select board's primary responsibility?
Policy and priority.
Right, policy, right. You're the chief policymaking one of the town. He implements your policies. He oversees projects. You should have a list of goals that you review every year and you evaluate it at the end of the year, right? It needs to be well organized and based on a set of achievable goals with milestones so that it's not arbitrary. So at the end of the year, it's not, oh, someone so told me he didn't do this and I, you know, let's give him two demerits, right? You need, you put it in writing, identify what the goals are, hold them accountable to the goals.
And is that the big anti-pattern? Like not having those policies is what creates problems for these towns and that's what we're dealing with?
It, it can. Some, you know, you know, having policies isn't solve every problem.
Right.
You know, sometimes.
Well, people are.
It's just an uprising.
Yeah.
People, and they, they don't, you know, they, they dissatisfied with the whole system.
Right.
Right? And the town administrator often becomes a scapegoat for that, right? But that's, that's just a kind of aside the point. Having the policies in place, having the goals in place helps you manage.
And I mean, we agree with all that, but I, I would probably say, I, all right, I'll take a step. All that was in place, perhaps the noise and the dis, lack of execution in some cases on the project I referenced would not have happened perhaps. But I mean, there is a human factor here that sometimes I do think that there needs to be. There might need to be, you know, some engagement to facilitate great law change potentially. Or we just say, no, we would never do that and the T A will live and die with that, the person in that seat.
But to what you said about sometimes there's an uprising. Jim Purcell is a long time town administrator. I think though, I'm trying to remember the exact term he used. They had the word fatigue in it, something like relationship fatigue or situation fatigue. What happens is there's a, you know, there's a, there's a shelf life or, or, you know, a life to this whole relationship. And after a while, it just, the fatigue sets in and it's time to move on. Right, no, I mean, that's, reminds me of the old joke that President Johnson used to tell about he and Lady Bird being together so long, they go to bed every night and rubber get up against each other and nothing happens anymore. So, you know, it's the same thing, right?
When, when you're talking about like, Mike said succession planning, like G D says succession planning and Mike M believes you do it too. This is the kind of stuff and structure that like, when folks look at T A roles, they're like looking for this sort of, you know, community, right? To come in and, and build all that. I said a bunch just a few minutes ago, you know, I had said to people before I started, it's exciting that like there's a lot of systems that I get to have, you know, kind of say in its creation and I get smiled. And then that's cool a couple of times. And then it's like, oh, then it gets a little daunting. So to have, to have this in place is, you know, it's a good future plan.
Okay. Anything else?
All right.
All right, so group B had the financial piece.
Wow, how lucky for you.
All right, so why is this an important attribute? So at, at a basic level, the town can't function without a completely new fund. So this is a vital function. Having it be in the T A camp, so that provides a partner of knowledge between successive boards kind of is a baseline of competency. And to Jeremy's point, that intimate financial understanding of the town equals good advice and good data to act on. If you don't really understand the shape of the ship, you can't really make suggestions. For dislike about this attribute, we said that if all of this financial is on the top level, it can be a time suck for that particular person. And if that person is seizing control of all the underlying functions, it can also rob the underlying people of experience. If they're just funneling data to a person, they're not, they're not fully executed or preparing for a new position. We thought that it was appropriately broad as described. And strengthen or weaken this attribute, we said we would strengthen it and statutorily define it as a bylaw.
Something that dovetails with what you said, what we talked about here is the, the managing of people who are doing it.
Yeah.
Right? So like you said, it's not, everybody just from one takes it away from them, you know.
Yeah, exactly. You have to trust the people that work under you. You can't give everything.
I think the tax recap process is going to be a, a test of that, you know, of, of the ingredients we have here to get to work together, right? Like we have new assessor, the treasure collector's new in her role, I'm new in my role. The accountant is kind of the accountant and town clerk are the only community in it. So we're going to be collaborating and working together and relying on each other and trying to share knowledge across it.
Are you going to try to declare roles while you're doing that?
Declare roles.
Well, I think some of this is like, in order for people to be successful at their jobs, they got to know where the lines of their jobs start and end. And for you, well, that's like seems endless at the moment, so nothing you can do about that. But, but for the people underneath you who you're working with, there does seem like to be some lines that could be helpful for them if you could work that out during the process, you know?
And so that, the tax recap process is kind of how I want to like kick off our finance team. And because it is so well defined, that's the assessor's page, that's the clerk's page, that's the treasurer's page.
It is, it does, is statutorily defined.
All right, so it's just more about the collaboration when it comes together.
And it's about, you know, making sure we're hitting our deadlines and making sure they have the right information. Like Ellen has all the votes and all that kind of stuff. But I think it's a good place to kind of kick off our, you know, we're the financial management team. And it's like, there's not going to be a lot of stepping on toes there because they're kind of campy.
Okay.
And then, you know, I've said the phrase a couple of times, like small victories, building momentum, like do these sorts of things first. And then we can, you know, then there'll be, you know, that success can lead into our financial policy, you know, tweak and final adoption. I know it's not the link from block zero, but I don't give the rest of the finance team confidence and other people in the finance, not just me. I don't give them confidence in their peers as well.
Yep.
And, you know, we need to do that, so.
That's a perfect place to start with building your team. As you said, the recap process is very well defined. And it's a good way to find out the capabilities of your team, right? Because these are the basic functions that they're supposed to know.
Let's see, so number five for how the select board would interact with the town administrator. We said the select board provides policy guidance and prioritization of projects. Only does not go into meetings.
Okay.
Can I ask like a political question about the bylaw section there that you're writing down? Because you already done the last one and this is great. But when, when we put bylaws together, is there like an issue with grouping these into like one town meeting and bylawing the people that hold town? Like is there a, is there a consequence to bringing too much order too quickly?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, people, people are going to resist change, right? I mean, you, right, we all know that, right? So. I can tell you that's too fast is, is, you know, you're going to have to go through a process of talking to people and bringing people along before you would put a bylaw before town meeting. Well, I, I can tell you that what has happened in the past where there's been a annual town meeting that's had things added on ad nauseam at the end. People just start making a motion to pass over the article. And then, you know, it's bedtime. So, you know, it's not like some towns have.
Six days.
You know, seven, seven subsequent Fridays and it's like.
You try to do it all one night.
Yeah, that's not happening.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So.
Okay.
Yeah, so I would, I would go slow with the bylaws. You know, you, you're going to need some bylaws. Start with some policies that you can adopt. Start a con, get a conversation going with the community, talk to other boards. Get your finance committee, I think, be a key one to get on board these kinds of changes, right? But anyway. I wanted to go back to, you talked about not having, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but not having people feel like they're just subservient to, to the town administrator, right?
Just coddling the information.
So the budget process, right? There's, there's a, department heads, that's where the budget starts, right? It's, it's the expense side of the budget anyways, right? They put forth their budget. Town administrator doesn't say, throw that away, right? Either trim it or ask for more information. But that department head has to be an integral part of building the budget, right? Each department head in their own way. So it's very important to make them feel rightly that their, their input is meaningful, right? And it's almost, it's not sacred, but kind of is, you know?
Which part, what they've asked for?
What they've asked for. You know, they're, they're the expert in the area, you have to trust them that they're asking for what.
And every budget document that I've done has had the request they've recommended about these columns, right? Like so, it's really evident if the, you know, police chief asks for a hundred grand more in overtime and then it was not recommended by the select board, you know, you pulled that out right there. You can see that.
Right.
Then there's consequences to that. Later in the year, something happens, the police chief goes back, points out and see, I told you I am.
I needed that, I needed that overtime and we had this problem because I didn't have the overtime, right? So, yeah, you, you need that transparency of the process. I interrupted you.
Oh, I was just ready to move on to number two, but.
I think the other two, I think it was pretty self exclusive. So let's go to group C.
Play is coming on. So this is a, yeah, about exercising a role responsibility for human resources of the town. And I guess sort of similarly to the first group, like the human resources are so central. Like if we don't have people in place who know how to do their jobs, nothing gets done at all. So we get chaos. And so, you know, it's really critical that there's somebody who's like overseeing all of human resources. And so, like in terms of strength, that's, you know, that's like why that attribute is important is like, well, we need it. But then, I guess, one issue that came up that's, you know, challenges like trust issues that sort of when there is that single point of like human resource direction that there might be concerns that there's like, that views are not being expressed. Like so like the select board would, would offer direction about, you know, for collective bargaining, for example. Direction about like goals and strategies. And then, you know, there might be some trust issues. So like, I feel like trust issues kind of actually just attended a, a conference for women in elected municipal offices yesterday where the whole theme was trust and establishing trust. And it was more about communities. But I realized that really is the issue here with a lot of like personnel issues. Like main, establishing, maintaining trust, knowing that there's a process, like there are guardrails in, in place, for example, as well as like the communication. So like it's kind of this running theme. And then, yeah, so I think I had trouble processing sort of the meaning of like defining the attribute more or less. But, but in terms of strengthening, I mean, we do like, right, we like, it comes down to like codifying, like, like what, how it's going to happen. So like strengthening it, but also in terms of like having the support roles established, like having a stronger human resources department. So, and then in terms of, yeah, interacting with the select board. So, I mean, I think just having, you know, the, the communication is so key. I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, my big thing with the, with the trust was this like bidirectional trust issue when we delegate. It's not just, it's not just on collective bargaining, when we delegate anything. But Jeremy has to go sit with a group of people and tell them what we think. And that means they have to trust him. And then vice versa, we weren't in that room. He comes back, we talk in an executive session about what happened. We have to trust what he interpreted in that room. And so the, the most important piece is everybody believing everybody so that the bargaining process can complete. Like, you know, we believe you, so we believe this as much as you can give. We believe you think this is fair, et cetera, et cetera. That portion has been, I don't want to say it's lost, but we've been very directive while I've been here and just like, yeah, of course, it's go ahead and negotiate that. Of course, we give our opinion, but I hadn't thought about what that meant until right the second, which is, it means a lot of things to a lot of different people. It might be very difficult for Jeremy to manage that. Also, what does he do if they don't believe him? They're going to, it's going to be clear, he'll have to come back to us. How does he do that? How does he work with us and, and on that trust issue when he's not the one with the distrust, right? He's a proxy for the distrust. So there's a, without.
That sometimes helps though.
Yeah, of it, yeah.
I get to sit there and say, well, like, you know, I don't know, like, I gotta, I gotta go talk select board about this. Like, I don't know. And so it gives, it gives that a little bit of space too. And these are people that I work with every day.
On the other side of the table.
And not that, not that, you know, drives outcomes on contracts, but there is that, you know. I see this person every day, we work in the same building. And then it also allows you guys to be, you know, this is what I would always say to the mayor, like, I go into the room and say, no, no, no. And then you elected, they come shake their hand and say yes at the end, like you have a contract, right? So like that, that, that keeps your relationship in the policy setting and not.
I feel like though, if you had, like here where I said, like witness is a pattern in, in I T, it's a, it's an I T pattern. And so if we had a, if we had a third party here to witness that, since we had an H R director or someone of a sort who was able to split the middle there when needed, probably not often, but when need to give that high level perspective, that might change the way some of these operations work. This whole thing is about H R and it's very clear that we need more there, so.
Well, when I think about trust, okay, there's, there's a lot of different aspects of that. Trust from an H R perspective, you know, employee relationships, right? The T A is that ultimate responsibility for human resources, right? But the T A also is the person who's going to recommend somebody get fired, right? Take disciplinary action. So there needs to be somebody else, right? That H R coordinator or H R director there that employees can go to with confidence and will not talk to the person who's future potentially in his hands.
Something structural in the system as opposed to a political process.
And that's something, yeah, and that's something you address in your, in your personnel policy. What they, whether that is. As far as collective bargaining goes, Jeremy's exactly right. When you, you all work on your strategy and then he goes to the table. Having that separation between you and the bargaining gives him time. That time can be very important because collective bargaining is a dance that has, it's like, you see the old period movies, people, you know, waltzing and the, you know, the exact movements they have to make. It's prescribed by law, there's certain things you can't do. And if you do them, you're in an unfair labor practice situation. You, you don't want to, you don't want to be before the labor relations board an unfair labor practice charge. So it gives him time to say, just I really need to go back to the board. Unions are pretty good at putting you in a box and trying to make you slip up and agree to something you're not ready to reach to.
And a part of the process, right?
First couple of times I did contract negotiations, I was like, here's. First couple of times I did contract negotiations, I was like, there's no way this is how it actually works. This can't be right. It takes all day, you're in and out. And, you know, I thought maybe that was just a really difficult union you were working with. And then I've, I've done probably like seven or eight more of these cycles, and it's, no, it's the same every time. Takes so much time.
But I can tell you what the alternative is when you don't have it. When I'm talking about chaos.
Yeah, I, it's different. I grew up in Pennsylvania where teachers are legally allowed to strike. So my senior year, teachers had been without a contract for three or four years at that point, and they went on strike for the entire month of October. I just liked it, it was the one October. And it was super disruptive to everybody. I was fortunately open up, but like, my people who had younger children, the works and stuff, work and stuff like that. So, yeah, avoiding non-self-strikes, but that kind of labor unrest. And again, I work with these people every day, like, you don't want that to sour the relationship on how to set a manhole cover.
Yeah, yeah. And that's where, that's where the rules work in your paper. You can follow the rules and they, that's not personal, right? You're following the rules, they're following the same central rules.
Right.
Okay, any else saying that?
So, town council.
I mean, I don't know, yeah, yep. We were talking about, yeah, one, two, three, and our, yeah, I mean, because there's things related to town council. And I think it was, I think, yeah, I don't know that we, I don't know what the policy is. I don't know what the policy, I mean, in terms of, like, I think the select board doesn't always know all the things that town council is doing. And like, even our town administrator is the central point. But I guess, I think we need more, strikes me, that we need more clarity about, like, about this coordination. It's important for there to be somebody who's, you know, overseeing all of this. But it's, so it's, it's key, again, like, you know, for the, yeah, well-being of the town in so many ways. But like, it's, yeah.
So one comment on that last point, and that, we're working, you know, subset of us are working on select board policies manual, and a lot of these topics are in there. You know, as we're listening, I think there's more to add. But like, that specific one, town council use and the procedure for engaging town council is in there.
Right, so, I mean, but in terms of, like, the town administrator's role, like, I think that would, should also be clarified, like, so.
Yeah, and I, clearly, the town council, you, you should have a list, right, of matters that are in litigation, right? Currently in litigation, right? And every so often, town council should be coming in and sitting in an executive session for briefing you, right? You should know exactly where things are. But when, but when it comes to, like, negotiating a settlement, you know, he should be in the room, negotiate with town council, negotiating that settlement, or he should be briefed on what the terms of that settlement are and be able to say, gee, I think you're going too far here, or you're not going far enough there, and give his input. He at least has to know from a budgetary standpoint, what's getting thrown up, what kind of numbers are being talked about in these settlements, right?
Right.
There's a bylaw or a policy. This would probably be a policy. I mean, these are, these last two are about legalities and liabilities. Like, it's the whole thing is really about legality and liability. And so, you know, as a whole, it's just inherent that it's part of your job to deal with that. How far in do you declare responsibilities revolving around legalities and liabilities? Because that in itself is a liability, right? So that's a little, like, you know, how would you strengthen or weaken? I don't know what it means to strengthen or weaken some of these on a legal front, or what it does to his, you know, life as an employee of the town, you know? Like, how, how does this change his job if we strengthen or weaken that?
I think these last two on your list, I, I don't know that you can strengthen, you know, it's kind of either, either, either he does it or he doesn't, you know? Somebody has to be the risk manager for the town, right?
When I hear Alana describe it, the engagement with town council, I look at it and say, I don't, I say, absolutely should be our point, right? I think what I hear and what I feel about is, I don't know what's going on. So it's more of the information come back up to the select board, has always been lacking. Like, I can't tell you how, I mean, I know, I know one thing, top of my head, it's, it's been there, we've talked about it, no idea where it stands, right? So I think, to me, that's what's missing. Not the fact that the TA is the, has that role, it's that.
Like, the communication.
We've never been kept up to date on what things are.
So I, I was just thinking about this now, and I've, I've done it in parts, but I would like to, likely will formalize it going forward. I have the town administrative report, and I tell you kind of highlights in the last two weeks, or select board stuff, whatever. I would like to make maybe in every other meeting one, a town council report. So she's working on lots of stuff that isn't litigation, isn't executive session work, right? But just a kind of a readout on, here's the, here's the 10 things, here's where they are now, and then two meetings later, whatever, you get one.
Yeah.
Right.
Well, you know, it's interesting you bring that up, because, you know, previously, you know, there was a, there was a, I guess you'd call it an unwritten rule, that no one could go to town council without going through us. And at a certain point, when the town administrator left, you know, there, I was, I gave different people permission of what they didn't speak to. And then what was happening was, it was kind of getting lost in the ether, because then it wasn't coming back through to us, just because of the process. And I think it almost has to be some kind of a spreadsheet where each one of these has to be, you know, here are the issues that are ongoing, have they been settled?
Right, exactly.
Because you're right, there's a couple, you know.
Yeah, yeah, all, all good idea, yeah, it should be happening. That should be happening. I don't know if you need to do every, you have the meeting with town council, but it is some regular checking with town council. And as far as access to town council, yeah, that's another policy that many towns have, select boards have a access to town council policy. It's really, they really intended to control cost, right? You don't want anybody picking up phone and calling town council and then pressing the button on the.
Want people to also make decisions that are in their purview to make and not defer them to the lawyers when they don't need.
Yeah, I think a lot of that happened in the absence of a permanent TA.
Yeah.
Right.
And somebody wasn't responsible, you know?
You should always try looking up the law or the regulation first, before you call a lawyer, right?
Yes, it's a lot cheaper to read it on the internet.
Sometimes.
Right, yeah.
Right, and if it.
If you understand what you're.
Decision, and it's the wrong decision, and then three years later, you know, the person is.
Probably been a year and a half.
And they're not clear, and then.
So, so far.
Somebody needs to, somebody needs to make, be in charge of that. Usually the town administrator works with the select board. Sometimes, select boards want people to come to them for that opinion, for that permission, sometimes.
Not to put free advertising on a meeting while we're recording, but where did these muffins come from?
Muffin house.
My goodness.
So.
That's a good thing.
Right up the street.
I'm gonna propose we take a break.
I was gonna be my question, there's gonna be a break.
We're a little, we're, we're a little bit behind, so.
What, a select board?
Good news is we have a hard start, so.
Yeah. Why, there's firearms raining in one in here?
Well.
This is a great focus.
Yeah, so a, this is a one pager from DLS about forms of government and how to give you some expectations, laws about how to maintain you. I know there's a lot of interest in doing it chartered, but. There are other tools. How are we doing?
I think you're.
We're gonna have to muffin.
Most hours.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's kind of like when we talk about budgets, it's foundational to, like, defining my structure and, defining what I do, and then I can implement that structure elsewhere. Everyone's had this, yeah, I want to make sure we get to at least a point again where we're talking about specific roles and responsibilities, saying, making you go this direction.
Do you want to just say, like, twelve to one or whatever, that nice when you do that?
Are you like, now, now we should be on that?
Yeah.
Well, this is nice to hear.
I'd love to see some sort of report that showed, like, what structure towns had in place before they got to a charter. Like, that would be very interesting, you know, like, how many working policies they had, how, like, what, how deep was their employee, you know, relationships and organization? Like, was it a hundred employee town with a hundred policies? And then, because I don't think it's demographics that forces towns to get into these more structural documents. I think it's just sentiment of town, like, the population gets to a point where they require this type of structure. What is that point? And like, how close are we to it? It's a real big open question.
Isn't a driver though financial? That towns tend to do things as volunteers because they can't afford to hire the staff to do it? Well, the historical progression has been, of course, started with select boards. And, you know, one member of the select board was the police chief, and one, you know, they ran the town, right?
Our police chief is an elected assessor, not a select. Yeah.
We did have an elected select board member who was a member of the police department, until he wasn't. And then ultimately, the state, the legislature actually passed a special law that prohibited that from happening further.
Right. Right, we really can't do that kind of thing, select boards can. Ethical, and, and, yeah, in certain cases they can. But, and then, you know, people started having, what's it like? Select, select boards started having, you know, hiring department heads and creating departments. But every town, and I don't know if you're gonna find a common thread that says, hey, when you hit this point, people tend to go to a charter.
With enough data, you can pull out patterns.
Yeah, it's the, you know, how, how many policies do we have?
Oh, you should count them.
And so, no other, yeah, no other town's gonna have that either.
Yeah, you're right, if we don't have it, nobody else has it either. But it's still gonna be interesting.
It would be. But I think we have a, we have a whole team that does nothing but charter work, so.
Yeah.
That poses the question.
It's a combination of size, size and money.
It's like, if I could dump enough information in and build a model and ask that model that question, I think I would get an answer. That's why I'm saying, I mean, I wouldn't be able to validate, I wouldn't be able to validate.
They could just make it. You're talking about AI, right?
Yeah, yeah. Even a machine learning model, I can see the pattern. So, yeah, I'm just curious. Somebody must be thinking around, and I think take somewhere crunching some sort of numbers relevant to that.
It would be interesting to know, like, like, how long does it usually take, like, to go from, you know, from bylaws to charter? Like, how many, how many town meetings do you have to have, like, go through before you?
Because you could plan for that. If it's like, look, this is 10 years, and it takes these structural components, and without them, you're just not gonna get there. So try unless you put those components in place, you could really plan for that. So I think that's why we all probably put it to the end of our list, because there's so many unknowns about it.
Well, and we can't start.
And we can't start it.
We can't start there, right, we can't start.
You can't start at the end.
I would venture to say most charter efforts fail the first time.
Because they don't know why they've put that charter forward, or because they didn't involve enough people?
They didn't involve enough people, and they didn't get enough consent, and they didn't get consensus.
And most people won't pay attention until it's imminent, and their initial response is to say no. I think it's gonna make them lose power or authority.
Like, most overrides fail the first time, right?
Right.
Okay. I, I don't know what to say. But, you know, it's, we've been talking over yours.
I'm freezing. I couldn't change the.
Yeah, I'm also.
Got a bunch of stuff I want to run through, give you food for thought. My goal is, an hour, an hour from now, will we talk, will we making a list of nuts and bolts things here? Okay, yeah, right? So, this is a model financial planning cycle. And obviously, we've talked about it a little bit earlier, but I'm just gonna run it pretty quickly. Thank you, your financial planning cycle should start with a revenue expense forecast. That forecast shouldn't be multi-year. And it should, the reason, reasons are pretty self-explanatory. It helps you determine whether your budget in the next year is going to be to, you know, expand, to be reduced, every level. You know, what's the overall expectation of the budget for the, for the next year? Anticipates budget gaps. Helps you understand the long-term implications of short-term decisions, right? By having that forecast going out five or six years. Helps you facilitate consensus. This is a very key thing in it, you know, every, you know, intensive thing, finance, you know, it's just some numbers on a spreadsheet. You need to talk to people. You want to have a, you want to reach a consensus. I don't know how you, when you get to town meeting is with your budget every year, is it, is it, is it a fait accompli, or is it?
Depends what you're asking for. I mean, more, more often than not, it has been, as we get there, there's been a few questions. But if, like, for instance, this next town meeting we have, could be a very interesting discussion depending on what we decide to do coming out of this type of meeting, right? So there is some, there is some short and long-term. You're talking ATM, not SGM, right? Right, okay. Well, no, SGM, you know, with, with the senior center. But I think we're starting to bring, when we bring large-scale financial obligations to the table, whether it be operational budget override or project, you know, debt exclusions, those are obviously a little more.
Right, those are big, those are big issues. Having that forecast and having, and building consensus around that forecast at the very beginning of the budget process gives your, your departments, your boards, your committees, everybody is on the same page, expectation wise, for what that budget's gonna look like ultimately, right? So a key, it's a key piece of the puzzle here, and it should be done early, you know? Capital planning process starts around the same time as the forecast, finishes a little bit after. The, the model, the model process would include a capital committee appointed by the, by the select board. Some towns have, require that there be a representative of the school departments, and some towns have the moderator appoint some members. You know, you can structure it however, you know, many different ways. But there would be a capital committee, a citizens committee, to vet the capital proposals. Town administrator puts the capital plan together after confirmed with his department heads, goes to the capital committee, then goes to select board finance committee and town meeting. The reason this is done first is so that you can identify, if you've got your forecast, now you can identify what revenue you have to allocate to capital. And you allocate that capital before you do the operating budget, not after, right?
I think we have been, we're sort of in a unique, not a unique position, but, um, think about this process and we're in our infancy in the sense that we've got the capital planning process sort of started, we're a little further along this year than we were last year. Even in the operational expense forecasting, we've never done multi-year, right? So why I bring that up is because a lot of folks in our operations probably don't, we here, we don't have a capital plan from the people that are intended to be stakeholders in the capital plan, right? So there's going to be a lot of education and training out to our staff to understand what is their role, what is, what do they need to do? How do they need to manage finances, right? Because they've never, a few, I mean, Chief Cursey clearly has a strong grasp on what his budget is. Everybody else looks at the budget, it's less of a thing, it's really, I'm not getting what I need, it's just a thing, you know what I mean?
I think, I think department heads actually have a pretty good grasp of their narrow departmental budgets.
Right.
In that there's no real centralized procurement process, so our check is that department heads, you know, know what they have and what they're committed on.
They know what they have, but do they ever talk to you what they need in three years?
A few have, the people you would expect, right? The, um, the chiefs who try to forecast out what, uh, equipment needs, they're going to need, um, highway, seniors, COA, the new center sucked up all the oxygen on that, but occasionally.
That, I mean, we're in our infancy because I think there's a lot of opportunity from an engagement standpoint, getting the folks that haven't had a role in the past, understanding what their role is, what their role can be to, to drive these first two slides, a lot of, you know.
Well, that, that's a big key, a big difference, what, what you can be because previously, just because of finances, we'd never looked past, we were just trying.
But it was level service.
Yeah, we, right, we were just trying to survive. I mean, that really was the, the underlying, you know.
So let me ask you a question, is there value in having a capital plan even if you don't spend it on it?
Yes.
Yes.
No question.
You need to have a plan. And is a five-year plan better than a one-year plan, right? Yeah, so you need to go through the process whether you have the money or not.
I agree.
Okay.
I agree. Does that mean we also have more training to implement, like, right? Cause if you don't have the skill for multi-year planning and we're asking you to do it, that's a failure on our part. So. Even training in the process of thinking of the capital plan, started what, we, we had a three-month ramp time before the ATM. We've introduced it to the department heads in some way, shape or form in the last 30 days. Our, my expectation is that when we engage them directly, there'll be more aha moments to say, oh, I could have said this or done that, right? So to me, the education and training process is just a process and what they.
Setting expectations.
So next year is a little smoother than this year's, you know what I mean? It's going to be a incremental.
I, I think because a lot, a lot of folks involved, they don't know what they don't know.
Right.
Right.
And this is just going to start to educate them and make them understand those aha moments that, you know.
Are there training resources online, like, I don't know, like MMA or DLS about like, you know, the capital planning process for department heads? Cause like, that might be a useful resource.
Yeah, there are and, uh, you know, many of them belong to professional organizations that have that information. And then you said it's, it's kind of iterative, right? The first year, Jeremy's going to ask for their five-year capital plan, he's going to get it and he's going to, he's going to give it back to them and say, I need a strength, can you, you know, what does this mean? What does that mean? Do you think about that, right?
And, and we're in year two now, so we're even seeing a little bit of that and some submissions are getting back. It's, you know, here's what, I had three sentences last year and here's a much, you know, more in-depth sort of piece to it. And also, you know, the number got bigger, right? So I don't know if that, uh, because you're defining it differently, is that because you understand it differently? Is that because your need changed?
And my, my comment is that we're, this is an evolution, not a revolution. We should not expect to jump to ideal state in year two. I think you just need to be fit to kind of manage. I mean, are we impressing that? Do people feel that? Well, I think, I think last year was more, more event-based, we need to understand very clearly what our capital needs are for the capital budget and anything else you might want in the next five years, right? This year it's, it's okay, we did it, you're used to, kind of used to it, because a lot of people say we don't have one, so, okay, communication. But I think this next go-round, it'll be far more engagement between this committee or group with the stakeholders. So it's very autonomous last year, I think it's going to be more collaborative this year, so they, they, they feel the process.
One comment is as we're building this process and everyone's getting on board, it needs to become part of the organization to survive all of our tenders. Like it has to be part of the policy moving forward.
Right, he's on the TA.
He already leaned over, so this is in the financial policies. Because the financial policies are things like, you know, how do we invest, start trusts, but also, you know, what's our, what's the cyclical or the, you know, the rhythm of capital planning, the rhythm of the financial planning. So the financial policies touch on a lot of.
Right, you're right, exactly. Financial policies just aren't just about the transactions. The, uh, the revenue side of the capital plan is very important, right? What a lot of towns do is they don't allocate a specific amount of money or a specific percentage of their revenue on an annual basis to capital. And what happens is that, uh, it, it, everything gets used up on recurring expenses and nothing is left for capital. So the best policy is to decide how much of my, uh, how much of my budget am I going to set aside for capital in cash? How much am I going to allocate for debt service of my annual operating budget, right? So that you have, you have both the borrowing and the, uh, the pay-go, as we call it, portion of the capital setting. Set, you, you'd be really strong about setting those numbers in stone. Because the minute you take that away from capital to pay for firefighter raises, for example, you're never going to get that money back.
It's already, it's already happened and all of our debt is outside of two and a half.
Right. And some towns do that, they, they, everything they need for capital, they bring to the voters. They sometimes do that. I, I don't, that's not a best practice, but sometimes do that.
We have the guidelines officially a policy, actually the board did adopt as a policy is to allocate percentages of free cash to both stabilization and capex. Of course, we have this cap on capex.
Right, I was, yeah, I was thinking about that.
Which always kind of by statute, I believe, for some reason, we, we limit a hundred thousand dollars a year to capex.
Is it in the bylaws?
It's in the bylaws.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think that, I don't, that's not a state law.
No, I think there was a mention, that might have mattered a long time ago.
Right.
I was correct, we were going to change the bylaw and then it might have been.
Whenever it was written.
Could have been a special.
Oh, might have been a special act, yeah. So I think we got to go back to get.
Yeah, I think, yeah.
Okay. But anyway, my point is, once again, I think we've got the seeds of some good practices, we just need to practice those practices. The capital budget.
How do we check ourselves on practicing our practices though? Is that the TA's job? Who, who is watching? It's our job to ensure that we are all following our policies.
If you think about our operational budget, we should start, we tried it last year, we put money inside for capital improvement within the operating.
Yeah, and we took it right back.
Well, I mean, yeah, there's a, we're going to get there, but I mean, I think we, we, we go at it again and we formalize. Once we get it in once or twice, it does become practice.
Yeah, special act of, in 2004, town may appropriate to define by majority voter the annual special town meeting in a year not to exceed $100,000 in each fiscal year.
$100,000.
Established twenty years ago, the way it seemed like.
Yeah.
Right.
Especially when you had nothing before that. Went from nothing to.
A high.
$100,000.
But the reality is we've got over 350 probably capex or stabilization has gone up, so we have practiced these guidelines. We just want to ensure we codify them, I think. And execute against them in the same way.
Yeah.
Right? Those buckets in the same way, instead of moving around.
Okay. Budget development, operating budget development, pretty straightforward, you know, mid-November-ish is when department heads should be getting their memo from the TA, some time to submit your budget. The request, the request should include the parameters that have been, that have been informed by the forecast, right? You've got the forecast, the forecast says, we can only afford to level fund next year. Then there's, there's the instruction to the department heads, it's going to be a level, a level service budget. TA should be meeting with the department heads. And you're fully regional school system, right? You don't have any local schools. But it still is a good idea to make sure you're talking to the schools, right? Really in the process, right? Even during, during the time you're doing the forecast, right? You want them to have, and in the regional school district, even though they don't have to, you want them to understand what your financial position is, right? Other than that.
In terms of engagement too, so we, the board had, we liaised on with committees and boards, everyone else did with the schools. So we participated on their capital and budget, uh, subcommittees. And I think that was probably because previously, I think there was, um,
First.
I guess it was lack of participation. When we think about the oversight of the fiscal and look at Germany, to what extent would the TA be the participant in the subcommittees versus the select board?
Yeah, I mean, I participate on like the staff level, like I talked to Jay Meyer, a lot, the school business person there a lot. I meet with him just at the end of last week, you know, their capital and about, you know. So, um, I'm happy to be involved in, on the like board side, but just on a day-to-day function staff level, we have some pretty good communication.
So from your perspective, our participation on their subcommittees makes sense?
Yeah, it's, I think it's great that, you know, I think it's great kind of optically, first of all. But then, so, you know, there's an official board representation on their board and that you're tied into it and you understand the matters when they come out and you can report back to the board. I think that makes a lot of sense. I think the work gets done at the staff level.
Yeah.
And that Jay, so that Jay and I are working together, um, is probably a better use of both of our times, rather than Jay coming to the select board meeting and me going to a school meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah, I mean, that sounds, that sounds great. One of the biggest drivers of dysfunction in small towns is tension between the school and the town, right?
You think that?
Right, you all know that, right? And the more you can, the more you can kind of, you know, give it up, don't you know, what are you fighting about? You know?
Yeah, I, I, I started in school business, um, so I'm at least, you know, empathetic to, to the plight of a school business administrator. But I think, you know, yeah, it's all been three months, but we, we've got a good working relationship and I'm hopeful that we can at least keep information flowing, even if there's not influence on it.
No, information is important, you know, you can't collaborate if you don't have the information, right? Okay, so, and, and that speaks to the need, really the necessity to have that, you can have a preliminary budget. Preliminary budget is probably not balanced, you don't know local aid yet, you don't know a lot of things yet, but at least you know what the gap is and you have a plan for, for bridging the gap at that point, or you, you know, you have an idea. But most importantly, you've got, by this time you're doing, you want to have everybody on the same page, right? You, you don't want to be fighting over, uh, the shape of the pie.
Right.
At this point in the budget process, you don't want to be fighting over the shape of the pie in October, November, when you're doing that forecast. But by February, everybody should feel, be feeling comfortable that, hey, we have this revenue pie, this slice is going for capital, this slice is going to town operations, this slice is going to schools, whatever, you know.
How do we check in along the way to make sure that that rift isn't developing? Is that the town administrator informing us how the budget process is going weekly or what, you know, during our meetings? Or is that some other more formal process by which we do a check-in before we get to the formal budget?
Yeah, I mean, I think we're going to have a number of budget-focused select board meetings where, you know, you'll get my first block sort of thing, that'll probably just be an agenda, I like to say, here's, here's my first crack and what I'm generally thinking. Um, and then I would imagine we set some off-cycle meetings, you know, second Wednesday or whatever to just do budget stuff.
Can I just, you know, checkpoint on this? So we're going through the budget process, the annual process. Let me understand how this is aligned to organizational design, because right now, I think we agree that Jeremy is our point. Right, so I would ask some more of the question. These timelines, these calendars, we actually do follow these to some extent. I'd ask you, from where we are today, structurally, organizationally, are we positioned to execute this effectively or is there a, do you see something, a need to, if this is going to be, say, yes, we are, I can do this, Mike? Okay, what doesn't get done because you're 80% allocated to this process and doing what the TA allocated 80% to this process? You know what I mean? From a design standpoint, I mean, I understand the process, so I'm kind of like, I don't want to, I'm not one of the best practices of a budget process. I do want to understand what's the impact of these best practices to our organization.
That's a Goldsgarre question.
Yeah, so, yeah, and I just wanted to check one, because if you're saying, good thought, hold that as on the next slide, tell me that. But if we're going to go through the whole budget process, I kind of want to checkpoint and say, is that our objective right now to do that?
Yeah, so, you know, there's only so many hours sort of thing, so, yeah, stuff, it's, stuff wouldn't happen in the same way that like, one of my other favorite budget phrases is that you can pay for anything, but not everything, so like, yeah, you need a prioritization. I don't, so one thing, does the town create a formalized budget book that gets printed and bound and distributed or is it just a finance committee report?
Historically, it's been a book.
Book, but I think it's the finance.
It's a finance book. That, that supplement that we pass out at town meeting is the budget.
Pretty much an Excel workbook.
Yeah, so it's not like the kind of 300-page.
It's not contextual though.
Yeah, okay.
There is a, there is a town's.
Yeah, the annual report.
Annual report that, that's given out. And within each, each one of those reports that each department head, you know, committee generates, it's usually a letter with specifics.
It's what we accomplish last year.
So how, how, why do you ask the question?
Because those are two really different lists.
Yeah.
If, when I first got to Edinburgh, it was the Excel, the news reports, Excel spreadsheets and forty, eighty pages and that was it. And then when I left, it was department narratives and staffing sheets and outside sections and discussion and it was 250 pages. And actually, what I'm not great at is the production piece and getting, you know, you know, we put this extra page in, we need to reformat it, like that kind of stuff, that makes it look nice and readable.
Yeah, that was always.
Always the executives.
That was always.
And I'm, and I'm saying, and I don't want to do that.
Yeah, no, that will always, it had always been your, your predecessor to handle that and everything funnelled through her.
Is that something we have to write down? Is that something that you would have liked to have known before this moment?
Yeah, right, it's like, yeah, a lot, so much is oral history, like this is how it was done and.
Yeah, I mean, so getting back to kind of Mike's point, just like, my default is to like involve Katie in like almost everything. So it's not like I would have just gone off and done the budget and said, you know, hold my calls, right?
Hopefully.
I hope you are. As you're absorbed into the budget process and HR organization that doesn't exist. So if you're absorbed into the budget process and HR organization that doesn't exist, HR issues come up. How do, that can't be ignored, so if you're eighty, you know what I mean? That's sort of where I want to go, is like, do we need to formalize an HR to put sort of the management structure? Is that, is that, is this gen HR or is it something broader? Is there, I mean, there's certain things that if Jeremy had to delegate something, it has to be delegated to probably somebody with some level of formal authority to be able to accept that delegation, right?
Yeah.
That's where I'm just saying, you know, the budget process, we know is going to, and it might be Jeremy says, I'm overseeing the budget process, but Katie's actually going to engage with the whole department, just as an example, right? I just want to understand how that works, because I personally don't believe we have the right personnel structure and manager structure in place to effectively execute the operation. And that's why we get into these binds where.
At the same time as the budget.
Yeah, so that's sort of where.
Same time, yeah, it's doing everything else.
Yeah, right, because you can't not do certain things because this time it's a seasonal impact, right?
Okay, so he definitely needs help. No question, right? He can't be, he can't be everything, right? But there's a number of ways you can go, right? You know, do you, since he does have a financial background, do you want to bring him in some help on the HR side, right? So somebody else is doing that, taking that lift. Do you, do you want to bring? You could, you know, you could go counterintuitive and say, he has a financial background, he doesn't have the HR background, we're going to make him the HR expert. He's going to learn that and he'll, and, and we're going to bring in somebody else from the finance team. Because he's going to know it, he's going to be able to oversee that. And that finance team is going to run more effectively while he picks out the HR piece. And so, you know, that kind of counterintuitive way of looking at it will help you in your succession planning because now you have, you have somebody who's got, now got two strings.
Right, so what types of thing can be outsourced effectively in municipal government? I don't know. But do we, I see, do we have to have that role internalized, to your point? Could HR, contract recruiting? I mean, there are contract staff recruiters out there left and right.
Well, we did it.
No, I'm just, I'm reading the faith, I'm just saying, it's an example, but it's not only what we have to hire to build a full-time structure, but what are areas, opportunities to regionalize and possibly outsource? So maybe the, we don't have the skillset, but we may not need the skillset internally. So maybe we double up on financial expertise and we have succession planning because we've outsourced X, Y, Z. You know what I mean? Those are sort of the.
This topic keeps coming up, I just want to point that out. We've spoken about this like multiple times today. The HR and essentially HR and how HR supplements Jeremy's job.
How about finance department? They don't want to.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's like this HR thing keeps coming up, so definitely something we have to fix, but we're missing that, that piece, the finance piece. We don't have.
Well, no, 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 I guess what I'm saying, I'm focused on the structure.
Right.
Versus the, I mean, to me, I would want to say, what are all the municipal roles we know the operations needs to cover?
Yeah.
Right? Start there and then we start to say, we know TA is at the top, I think, I've seen general agreement that we believe that it should do this to the TA. How else do we provide coverage with existing or new organizational structure?
Well, you're answer, your answer to that question was in this exercise that we did and the piece the three of us had, the last point was that we, we rely on a TA as our key advisor. And I can tell you that both from being on the, on the FinCom and then when I started on the board, it was looking to the TA to give us advice about those very things. And because they're presumably the professional involved in the day-to-day and they actually see, and the budget process and they see, because that's the driver, right? I mean, the budget process is the driver, but what do you want to regionalize with? And also, what is it that we have to, what are the, what are the issues that, things that we have to do versus the nice half things? And, you know, we've already done a lot of that, everything from regional plan, planning to, to animal control, you know? Have, have been, and, and we've outsourced things like the accountant. But I, I agree with you, this, this law that we can do, we've actually had those conversations and we need to continue to have those conversations. Because that, because regionalization is, in my mind, is the only way that we're going to get to where we need to be financially. At least that's a big, that's a big peak, that has to be.
I'm just flipping back the org chart there.
So lots of good commentary here. The, the basics of a financial structure are the town administrator, the assessor, the treasurer collector and the accountant. When you have all four of those in place, that's where you, you've got, you've got what you need. You can, you can build on that as long as your treasurer collector isn't spending half her time waiting on the window, right? And you're, you have, you know, you've outsourced the accounting. I don't know, there's a lot of value in having your town accountant across the hall.
We pay sixty thousand dollars a year for the outsourced and so that is, that is a bargain compared to what we would be able to.
Took a lot of negotiation with Eric to get him to, I was on vacation having phone calls, conversations with him about that. I'm grateful for him and what we get for that is a, is a huge bargain, you know? But it was out of financial necessity.
Yeah.
Certainly not desirable.
We have a principal assessor, but lots of the assessing functions are contracted, there's not a assessing department.
Right, right, right. And then we had, before we had a finance director, I mean, we had a, at one point, we had a finance director slash treasurer collector and assistant treasurer collector and a part-time accountant, a, a part-time clerk.
Right.
So we had three bodies in there so that you didn't have the treasurer collector at the window. That was the, that was the design, but then it kind of deteriorated.
I'll be honest, the financial side of the house in our town, it's the only thing we're ever focused on, it's the least I'm worried about. We've got some tweaking to understand and codify and educate and staff, because I do think.
Yes.
Clerk level.
Right.
Right. Support is an issue there, but it's an issue in almost in every, in every department. It's the, the other area, outside of public safety, fire and police, I just want to park because I think they're fairly solid, you know? And I don't know enough about them to speak to it, but I'll defer to Mike on that.
To Bagma, well, he has a multi-year approach to going to an entirely professional department or at least higher staff from ratios of professionals. And he's got, you know, long-range plans for the department that him and I have talked about. Not to the length that they deserve, but he'll, you and I will be coming to the board at some point with, here's, you know, here's fire, here's what fire in twenty thirty-five looks like.
I, I, I think, and I'm sure we all probably ranked it high, that HR is the, I think is the most critical piece right now of our.
Is it HR policies or HR department?
All of the above, I think.
So let's talk about HR. HR has two components, there's the transactional and there's the strategic. Towns traditionally have focused on transactional, strategic. In your case.
Crisis management.
Well, no, I mean, building the payroll, making sure people get signed up for their benefits, making the files, you know, the, the transactions that are involved, you know, filling out a job application, that kind of thing, posting jobs, all very transactional. You, from my assessment, you don't do all those transactional things yet, right? And although your HR coordinator is very capable.
She sure is.
Very, very capable, you've got a good person there.
Yes, we're lucky.
And, you know, I've said this before, she needs to stop doing the payroll. Payroll, payroll should be a finance department function, right? And it should be in the accounting office, but anyways. So transactional, so these are the things that are transactional. These are the things that are strategic. Supporting the strategic direction of the organization, right? Human resources, if you, if you, if you're going in a certain direction, you need, we're talking about, you need the right people in the right place. So how do you do that? We need somebody who's paying attention to that, you know? The long-term planning, employee relations, the trust issue we talked about, training and succession planning kind of go in, and then training and professional development, succession planning. Somebody to, to pay attention to that, to make sure that the people, you know, your assistant treasurer collector is prepared to step into the treasurer collector's home the next day if, if they have to, as you've seen us, right? The talent retention and development and customer service. So those are your strategic management issues for human resources.
You put comp classification studies, things like that into the finance role or the transactional? Because I would have put it under strategic.
It's strategic, it's kind of both.
Right.
Right, it's kind of both.
Part of your planning or?
It's part of your planning, but it's also very not simple, right? As I said, you know, you, people, if people in this grade get paid this, people in that grade get paid that.
To me, it's more establishing the grades, et cetera, the classifications in terms of job roles. To me, it's strategic, executing against the plan that you identified would be the most simple.
Exactly. And it forms the transactional piece, right? But that's all, that's part of your, your talent retention and development, that's.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
It's all wrapped in your employee relations, right?
So this is, I, I mean, I know we're going to do some of the tactical stuff probably because I'm not sure we're staffed to do it, but this is where I see us falling down more.
I agree, I agree.
Yeah, Jen is currently functioning like a benefit, she's a payroll clerk and like a benefits coordinator. That's what's happening, it's not, it's not the fully fledged HR.
So I did want to highlight something. The Collage Center did do a human resources audit, which I discovered like last week in two thousand sixteen. And make five recommendations.
I can, I can.
I support all of these.
These are the recommendations, I'm just giving you a paper, just so you know. So human resources coordinator, which you, you did hire, but you're not utilizing the way they should be.
I think that's one of our biggest challenges across the board. You know, every rule we have, you pretend we're not utilizing at the level, maybe they should be utilized, utilize that.
It's hard for us to go without, I think. And I don't know, I don't know how much more we can go without, right? Like I think that's sort of the problem is like we slimmed down, this town has slimmed down over the last ten years, fifteen years, for whatever reason, in some of these spots. And now there's no more opportunity to let things go, it has to be built back up again. And this does seem to be the main priority. It would be the best for people who work in the town to have a person in place who cares as much about them and what happens and all that good stuff. And that might go a long way to solving some other problems that we have, so.
You know, your personnel files are channeled, you know? You, you have a centralized improvement selection. There's no, that fully evaluation system, as far as I know.
High fives.
And that was, that was actually, I want to say negotiated though?
We were negotiating like fifteen years ago, but it kind of fell by the wayside.
And policies, we did a lot of, we do a policy audit checklist, you know, three pages long here. There's only four policies, six policies out of, I don't know, thirty, thirty that say, yes, you have it. The rest either say, these will be updated or you don't have it, so.
Other than none.
But so, I only made one copy of this, but you can take a look at it. So I can, I can, Jeremy, I can email you that, the study.
Thank you.
The full study, but, you know, these kinds of things, you know, these kinds of things need to get implemented.
I was just going to say, so then also, you know, we were talking about trust deficits in the past. I think this kind of gets at the root of that, I don't think that there's a lot of, a lot of great recommendations and we start getting there and then it doesn't happen and then people so much.
Side track.
You know, if you want to do this, it could never happen.
But having a set of personnel policies is completely in your control.
Yeah.
You don't need anybody else. You can, there's plenty of, I think the report included sample policies. So, you know, you can, you can adopt personnel policy pretty quickly. There's no reason to say, you know, like a block town, it's entirely, you are, everything you are in control. Evaluation systems are a little different, right? Unions to deal with, but you can have an evaluation system for your non-union employees. And again, some of these other things are staffing related, right? Your files are channeled because you don't have anybody who can spend the time putting them together. And your personnel files are key, you know, and legally, you get in trouble if you're not keeping them properly. And they're, you know, you know, it's separating. One thing that a lot of towns do is they, each department has a personnel file. It has to be a central personnel file and medical records have to be kept separately and interlocked. So two thousand sixteen, you know, eight years ago, you, you don't need to do another study. All of these things are still there and it's still.
Was this one, was this study done when the town contracted, like had an HR consultant or was there a?
Yeah, it was the College Center.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did we have HR staff, like kind of ended employees at the time?
I don't think so, that's why recommendation number one was hire a coordinator.
Jen or previous, the previous HR person before Jen, like.
Well, there was one before that too. It was ultimately the, Kim, Kim was the HR person.
Was this a year after Kim started?
She went, no, but, but then at one point, Kim said, you know, we need to hire.
Yeah.
An HR person, so we hired one part-time person who was there for a while and then there was a second one. And then Jen is the.
I think the twenty sixteen study pushed us in that direction.
Yep.
In the same way the twenty fifteen compensation study put together some level of fifteen step levels and the coordination across all the different departments.
Some action was taken with respect to this, it's just it was a baby step and then no.
And then the evaluation, the evaluation piece was to be implemented, agreed to do it with the, with the previous town administrator. And then one of the unions ended up in negotiations and it, and it went by, it was taken out of their contract or it wasn't implemented. So because it wasn't implemented for them, we didn't implement it for anybody.
And the other thing, a lot of these things are done, say how, you sort of one-off, meaning, okay, we're looking at HR today, but we're like, you know, squirrel.
Exactly, well, it's crisis management.
We need to have discipline to execute in terms of fall, in follow-through.
Right, yeah.
But part of that.
Five-year, you know, financial forecasting, we need other like long-term plans to pass this down to the next board. Because it's like, none of us were on the board in twenty sixteen.
Right, but part of that, but part of that too is, you know, each of your employees have only so much bandwidth. And your description is exactly, what happens is when you have somebody who's focused on this and then some, some crisis, the squirrel. And you, you know, they, they don't, no, I.
I mean, it's not all, I hear you, but part of me is I do think that if we as a board put forth a multi-year strategic plan, we can at least react to it, manage to it, run out of goals that.
Right.
It's why we're here, brother.
I'm just about to say, I asked you to. I'm just about to say, I asked you to see how many goals, you know, you said you will.
Right.
Do you have goals?
We have a goal of setting a goal planning.
Well, we did, we had one goal made.
Last year, we did. We threw it down to like five things, we each probably took a focus.
And we made progress, but we haven't, we haven't had a chance to revisit those goals formally.
Because there were squirrels and raccoons and all that.
And, yeah, like, yeah, major gaps in staffing, so, yeah. So, now we have those major gaps.
We've got correction, we're gonna continue.
Yeah, we do. One more comment that I wanted to make, some of those things that are gaps are something that we can act, you know, our own, ourselves, it's in our power, and those are things we should do as soon as we can, you know? You know, do it, do it now, do it later.
Right.
Why don't boards act unilaterally when things come up like this? What would prevent us from doing that?
Well, for instance, one of my goals last year was to do this, like, policy, and we started kicking it off, but we were dragging on for eight months because it takes a long time to do.
Right.
So, like.
Right. And I mean, when we, yeah, because we've had things that are, like, urgently need to deal with, and then, you know, by nine-thirty at night, our bandwidth is.
Yeah, I think how do we get more efficient is a big question.
Yes.
And it needs focus, maintain focus on the critical few things opposed to everything.
That's your multi, if we have that multi-year plan, we need to focus on.
Yeah, I mean, we went from that, brought the clipboard in Jeremy's office, which is full, to we got down to five things we thought were important, right? And we made progress against those five things. And we're building upon what we started last year. I think that's the cycle we need to get into. Now we need a goal-setting period of issue.
We need, we need your goals to be achievable.
Right.
And if you find this unachievable, you need to.
Right. And you have multi-year goals, multi-year goals are going to.
And I think specific time, like, checkpoints for the goals would be also helpful because we didn't have, like, a deadline for some, some of these. And so I think if we can think about, like, when, like, and put it on the calendar, this is, we're gonna, like, when we're gonna revisit this, and we expect to have, you know, X, Y, and Z done by that point.
Yeah. I blame Brendan for the select board policy dogma because he did not move our feet to the farm.
It's also really hard to review it one, one item at a time.
Right.
Brendan and I met for an hour yesterday, we got me on like eight or nine pages.
Great, yeah.
Great. So, that's.
I think, I mean, I think it's getting close, and well, and, you know, new things have come up along the way. And I think, I guess it might be helpful for us to think of it as a living document and like, but like, so like, but I think if we put, like, you know, we'll establish it and then on X date, we will revisit it and see what we need to change.
Remember the process is that you try to do it two or three different ways, and if one way didn't work, we tried it a different way. And then this third way probably seemed to have made the most progress, so.
Right.
Yeah, this is working.
We haven't given up on it, is my point.
Right.
No, yeah, no, it's important, it's gonna get done.
One caution, I'm working with another town doing goal-setting for a select board, and the select board is very, it's like, now, these are our goals, these are the town administrator's goals, these are our goals. She has her goals, these are our goals. That doesn't help.
That's the.
That doesn't help. They're, they're, they're the town's goals, right? And so, his goals and your goals should, should speak to each other.
For sure.
So, these are four suggestions I came up with, we could add more as we talk, we was, we just got the last half hour or so of this brainstorming on one specifically.
So, I will, I will say on number two, so our current, the incumbent, has a medical restriction on how many hours a week. So, if we were to go a full-time route in HR, incumbent would not be.
Would the incumbent be number three?
Yeah, if it's that part-time.
Except, I mean, I look at number, I like the first part of number two, and we want to call it HR direct, but I just, do we know that that's clearly the sole focus that's needed at assistant town administrator level?
No, it would be, it would be broader, like, operations.
Right, that's, so that's what I'm saying is, and we could focus it in HR to start because once some of these strategic things are in place and established, that you can see, you know, diminishing time allocation to maintaining and executing. So, I just want to be, if we were to hire ATA HR director, that's very specific. But personally, I think we need that level of management on our management team. How that's allocated functionally?
I talked to an ATA slash HR director recently, and she was saying that, when she came on, on a really simple, more larger town as Westwood, but she created the HR department. She's like, now I have two HR staff. She's like, and I get to go, you know, do, she's listed, you know, four or five other fun things she's done in the last year in town government. Just exactly what you said, it takes time to stand something up and then you get to work some other stuff.
Are, are we light on the top end or the bottom end, or both?
Both.
So.
I think.
Which is stopping the bleeding fastest?
Right, but I mean, that's a good question.
I think you need, this is parallel on my mind.
Yeah, 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 because I mean, you can't, you need the top level to make sure that the bottom level is, like, functioning, and you need the bottom level to give the top level.
And there's some incremental things we know we need to do. We need, I'll call them municipal clerks.
Yes.
That would definitely support finance team to start, but we need, we might need some level of municipal clerk and inspectional services.
So, interesting inspectional services. So, we had a previous incumbent who worked 37 and a half hours a week, and her time, she showed the exact same 37 and a half hours each week and we paid her, regardless of what she.
Yes.
When the current person was hired, we had said up to 37 and a half hours a week, or up to 35, whatever the number was. And because sometimes she works late-night meetings with the planning board, sometimes there's just not, and so, she's only here for an hour or two hours on Friday or something like that. She's been regularly working 27, 28, 26 hours a week, even though we've kind of expanded the role a little bit. So, I think we can take that job description, you know, common unit, but she can do a lot. She has the capacity to do a lot more. She's getting more done in less time than the previous person. I think she can do a lot more on that side of the house. So, before we even look to add kind of FTE, I think we can add to her job description.
The shoes.
Yeah.
So, her name's Lisa, Eliza, I always get her wrong. She is the admin assistant in, for planning and.
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah.
So, there's a desire from the conservation commission to have someone staff there, commission, so the conservation agent is different from the clerical duties. So, I think there's an opportunity to kind of add that to her.
The planner, I thought they had, didn't they have addition, I mean, I thought that the assistant planner was also doing some clerical work?
Yeah, so that's what we added, so we added to.
Okay, already.
They were just doing building.
Okay.
And we added planning.
Oh, good, so that's already happening.
Yeah, so if we, as this conversation goes on, we talked about consolidating inspectional services, I think we should at least have the opportunity to, you know, get more services out of what we already have currently.
I think we should define what's, I mean, so, I think about conservation and one of the big selling points of the full-time position was the ability to go and evaluate current fees and things like that, so.
Relevant.
Once again, there are things that are not being done that could be done, so when we look at assessment and sort of what we needed to do before we assume that there's bandwidth or no bandwidth, you know what I mean? That's all.
Yeah. Can you just pop back one second? We didn't talk about the first one at all. How, if we don't have an accounting department and/or another person to take over that position? So, when you say move payroll to accounting, do you mean make an accounting department or you mean outsource payroll? Because those are the two things we have for a choice here.
You can 100% outsource payroll, right?
So.
We've outsourced.
As much as we can, so.
So, my vision would be to see it in the treasurer's office. My previous community payroll was in the treasurer's office. So, to add staff, have staff there, you can both man the window and then process payroll.
And it's a clerical function you're describing.
It was, it was in the treasurer's office.
And I guess.
Wait a second.
When HR.
Yeah, it got moved to HR, yeah.
Well, I think we eliminated clerks, or didn't backfill clerks if they reallocated.
There used to be over 100 staff hours in the treasurer collector's office between the treasurer collector, assistant treasurer collector, and a clerical.
But I just want to clarify, the payroll functions we're talking about in that bullet are clerical level functions, is that true?
Yes.
Okay.
Filling out the payroll sheet, entering the information.
Okay.
Thanks, just want to make sure we spoke that out.
Yeah, the only reason I said in the accounting department is because you don't have a presence in town hall in the accounting department. So, there's those things that accounting employee should, needs to do that a treasury employee shouldn't be touching, and maybe you can.
Correct.
Have that different, and have the payroll person be that.
That was the payroll.
Presence in the accounting department to, that, you know, that's, it's not a major point. So, it could be treasury, it could be accounting. Where did you, where, who do you think the consensus is on the, is this ATA here? What are you thinking about?
You're voting yes.
You need an ATA.
We need somebody who covers this role.
Yeah, well, and we need, yeah, some, I guess, intermediate.
I need a senior management team.
Yes, exactly.
We need, we need more, a more robust HR department, and if you call it an assistant town administrator, because then they could do some other senior management roles, I'm fine with that.
See, see, it's interesting, because I go the other, sure, we need an HR department, but I think we need senior management that may stand enough first. But you know what I mean? That's sort of the, we need HR functions, I think we need senior, I mean, there's other management needs we have for departments, we don't even exist that we need, like, facilities, as an example. But I just wanted to make that distinction, because your focus on HR, my focus is on overall senior management with a focus on HR to start.
I feel like an ATA would be more enabled than an HR person, than HR director to do that, don't you? Like, using just the word.
Just, but at the same time, Jeremy is brand-new in his role, we're kind of redefining that. Before we had an assistant on, I'd rather see him continue to define what he's doing and then, but we know, we know, we know that there are HR issues that need a management level, not just a transactional level. And to me, that, not to say you couldn't take an HR person and transition them into an ATA role and change their title at some point, but I think the immediate need, again, is this, is this HR not on the transactional side, but.
We just need to be clear about that when we hire.
Could we make Jeremy, charge Jeremy with driving the HR strategy and bring in an ATA to support the finance role?
So.
No, 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 it's not, it's a serious question, it's more pointing out, trying to delineate the need for additional senior management in some role and the need for HR. The question is, once again, I go back to, what are all the roles we need to support and develop, and then how do we allocate that within a management structure?
And where are we not officially utilizing our services because we have a clerical support? We have a lot of people doing stuff that they're not supposed to be doing.
Yeah, it's crisis management again.
Right, exactly, but I would almost say, like, until that's filled out, we understand where the gaps are from.
And that's what I was getting at.
I don't know. I guess it has to start from both sides at the same time, but.
Frankly, I think you've got some holes you can drive a truck through. They're, they're pretty apparent. And in terms of creating a, you know, a management team, a management structure, kind of the assistant town administrator is a good place to start because you can, it's entirely under your control, right? You can assign the assistant town administrator to focus on this or that, or, right, it's, it's, it's a more, it gives you more flexibility, particularly given your budget situation, right?
And you talked before about the kind of counterintuitive way and bringing someone in, focus on the finance side, because I kind of think of the finance side of things and like the operations side of things, because that's often how journeys with multiple levels in the TDA office go, finance and operation. And there's already a lot of consolidation on the finance side that, like, is regular and apparent, like, you can have, like, an ATA finance person, and then that person drive, do the, you know, up to their needs in the budget, but also have treasury and accounting and assessing, all of that kind of together. Whereas, and then I can support that a lot better than if, you know, if they need support either in what the role looks like and what the role is responsible for, or in individual tasks. I can support that a lot better than if we bring in an ATA HR person or slash operations. So, HR, you know, is, as we've talked about, kind of narrow, I would like it to be a little bit more operations oriented, so it's not just HR. But then, that's a, you know, that's something I already have a gap in, so I don't know that I would, you know, be able to support that person as well, which, you know, I learned, but.
But if you found a person like the person you just talked about who built an HR department and understood that, that would be helpful.
But there, there's not as much apparent and obvious to me kind of consolidation. You're gonna be charged with HR, like, and what, like, and libraries, well, you know, libraries need kind of some capital help here, but, you know, a library doesn't take up a lot of my, a lot of my time on a week, you know? It runs pretty well, so I would want to make sure that we define what else is this person supporting besides HR.
So, maybe it is ATA slash operations and.
And it's HR for the first 18 months or whatever, but they need to.
It would definitely help with, and stop, to have a person who thought that way would help with the public services consolidation, right? Because you could have somebody step in a temporary leadership role while we build that up.
I think there's some huge economies of scale of having inspectional services.
Yeah.
Over there.
That's next slide. And, yeah, and Colleen, Colleen, our health agent, built the code enforcement department in Blackstone and is excited about the prospect and, like, really willing to lend her expertise to what it looks like in, her and Jack, I had probably a two-hour meeting.
Kind of curious, because maybe we should look at this, is if we look at the current structure and the roles and the people, current, never mind who's not here, what's your span of control? Like, how many directs do you have as you see it?
That's a good question. If it's more than a hand, it's too many.
Yeah, probably like 10, nothing, and police, I don't think police and fire think or act like they ever were to me.
No, but, but nonetheless.
But I mean, like, when there's like a department head meeting, right? It's like.
By the way, I don't do department head meetings now because that excludes, like, three people, so I just do all staff.
Okay.
But my point is, if you're.
But sorry.
But I guess the number, so the number at those meetings.
It's greater than that.
It's greater than that.
If you're up to 10, then I think that's too many.
I agree.
Directs. And I say, if you were to bring in an ATA, regardless of what, part of that role would be to reduce your span of control, so where, where's the concentration that makes sense to group together?
Yeah, so inspectional services, I think if you can get, you know, planning, building, conservation together as one, and health, you know, health.
That's good thinking, over the opposite side of the house.
Yeah, and then have, and whether that's a, you know, I don't know, I mean, you brought up ATA inspectional services, so I don't quite know what the title is, or maybe it's just, you know.
You put facilities in that?
There's, there's, I don't know, that afford, there's kind of, there's three ways that other places deal with ATAs, right? It's either HR, finance, planning, including inspectional services, or it's operations or finance, right? So, that, those are the ways they divide it up, right?
So, ATA operations director or something.
Right, so, that, in, in how you define what's operations versus what's finance, you know, I don't know, there's an argument for putting HR and finance together, there's an argument for putting HR and operations together, but you'd, you'd have to work through that.
How long does that have to be defined at this point, as opposed to just saying, we need an assistant town administrator and, you know, describe the job description to be such that it is an adjunct to the TDA? So, there's a very good chance that you would delegate many of those things, of those 10 points may then be allocated down.
Our ATA's title sentence is a big question.
Yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's done or not, but I'm a big believer in flexibility.
That is done, that is done, yeah. Very successfully, just an ATA and then.
That's what the law book has just.
And it doesn't insinuate. And it doesn't insinuate anything, I think that's like, you, you want it, we don't want to have to go through the work of changing the optics about what an ATA is, both to the ATA and to the town, so like, when you hire that person, it, it needs to be very clear, write out front, even if you don't write it down or define it in their title or otherwise, the expectations, both of the town and of the person, might be broken right away, so.
I would put it in your chart, so these are the.
Yeah, 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 exactly.
What's, what's helpful in giving a, a role and a title is selling the job to the town meeting or, give me to get the money, because, you know, you're, you, you need this because, hey, we don't have the money for a HR director, we don't, we can't afford a full-time planning director, this job will help us fill those role, those multiple roles without coming to you and asking you for money for three jobs, we can do it with one.
Yeah, it's like a dotted line, roll up a word chart, right, and it just shows what would have been there had we been able to scale out that fast. Like a few five-year roadmap with the word chart.
Yeah.
You need a suffix angle operations.
Good thing.
Maintains a level of.
Yeah, I think ATA Ops is, is an easy moniker.
And to separate the ops from the financial arms of the operation.
So definitely, I think, I hear people leaning towards defining it as operations and finance in, in making that division, rather than HR and finance.
Yeah, and with, so how does the board see, think about, you know, Jack McLeod, the Health Administrator, was, his actual title is Inspection Services Coordinator, that's that's, he has just been focusing on health, that's all.
Yeah, Board of Health.
Right, so, would you see, and it's, are, it's another question, but Inspection Services Coordinator reporting to an ATA operations, or the ATA operations being Inspection Services Coordinator?
Well, the only problem then is it leaves the whole HR piece out of it, right?
If they are the Inspection Service.
Yeah, let's try to define what you want to talk about in terms of inspectional services, okay? There's, there's two, really two views for the inspectional services, inspectional services department is limited to just those statutory building kind of things, you're building, you're wiring, you're plumbing, or inspectional services is a much broader term, includes planning and conservation and zoning and.
Is that highways?
Not highways, no.
But I can tell you that in previous, the previous TA and I had a conversation about inspectional services, and it was the view to the right.
Right. Is the view of the right more, more comprehensive, broader?
Yes.
I'm, I'm going right.
The, the argument against, I'll, I'll give you the argument against doing that, the argument against doing that is.
It was a little my vote, I guess.
Just so you have all the information, I don't, I don't have a thought in the fight, but it's that planning is, remember we talked earlier about planning being strategic, and so planning is more than just inspecting things, right? The planning board issues a subdivision approval, yeah, there's inspections that needs to be happened, the permitting issues issued, but planning is more than permitting, it's more than inspections, right, it should be, it's your vision, it's your master plan, right, so.
Well, I wasn't, and I don't think there was any suggestion that, that, you know, things are currently statutorily covered by other, the idea was that those other, those other permit granting agencies had, you know, some existing administrators, you know, that would do the day-to-day transactional things.
Right.
And the idea was that the Inspection Services Coordinator would basically oversee all of those people instead of just the couple in the Board of Health, which is how it was before.
Right.
So, that's why I talk about it being more comprehensive, that, that was the plan, you know, I don't know the, the nuts of both of it, but that was the concept of it.
My assessment of that, you know, it was, it was not a long conversation, but talk of, talk to the inspectional services people, out, and your coordinator and so forth, is that coordinator position is neither fish nor fowl, right?
Well, that's true.
You know, and it, it, trying to determine who's in charge of that red building over there, I wouldn't figure it out, right?
Well, part, part of the plan was that there was a, there was a, you know, administrative person who just recently retired.
Yeah.
The idea was that when that, and they retired, it took them, they, 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 they retired later rather than sooner, but the idea was that that all was going to be combined over there under, under him, that was the, that was the plan at the time a couple of years ago. Does the building inspector report to him?
No, no, no.
Right, so you need to have an administrative layer in between there, and that sounds like it would have been a SATA role.
Or it would have been this inspectional services person essentially, you know, reported to the Board of Health, but also reported to the building inspector, worked with the building inspector, because he had, you know, administrative person retired.
Yeah, the dotted line relationships there get all blurry when somebody's not.
Yeah. It feels like there's a lot of gray over there in that annex building.
Yep.
So it seems like there needs to be at least a point.
And I had heard from, from everybody who's building inspector over there, that Jack would be, you know, temperament and talent wise well suited, but they want to work for Jack, and they want that.
I would agree a hundred percent.
I agree too, just the thoroughness of the presentations and the communication.
I don't know how much, this is a public meeting being recorded, how much of this personal discussion, but I would, I would agree with everything you just said, and he is definitely.
I don't think anybody would disagree with your sentiment on Jack.
Right.
Is this why at the beginning of the presentation, there was like a couple of slides, and like, you know, one of them was about the, you know, disparaging office sizes and, and organization of the offices, other one was about the customer service and the presentation of our customer offices and how they're split between those two buildings, is this a chance, like getting in a, a, a new organizational head, a chance to also figure out how to present a customer support, like the front end of our business on the permit side better, like is that where you take that opportunity to, to stop making it the red annex versus the white building, you know, like is that where some of this can come in? Because that was pointed out a couple times at the beginning.
Too.
Well, yeah.
Town Hall phase two.
I've also talked to staff over there, I'm like, you know, it's all key rules, like, do you, do you like the bullpen aspect, do you need kind of private office space for stuff, and the consensus is, it gets annoying sometimes, but it's better this way, where they know what's going on, we can go over and help somebody else out, but they don't have meeting space over there, there's no, so the second floor has a, I haven't been to the second floor, but it's being used mostly for storage now, but there is a, you know.
I haven't been.
It's the library, the conference.
Yeah, so it's the library, since I was in there with my little kids.
The front's all overgrown with poison ivy and stuff, so, yeah, yes, whenever we do kind of phase two and talk about the elevator in Town Hall, I want, I want to address that and give them some meeting space on that side.
But back to sort of this, what I, I think I'm hearing is that an inspection, inspection coordinator position, we have one entitled that could, that could easily morph into one in fact, and that role might roll up to an ATA, which then allow us to also have the ATA or HR, you know what I mean, you start to see that.
Yeah, the bump out of the org, yeah.
Yeah.
I agree.
Definitely fill some of those.
Facilities management.
Definitely fill some of those gaps that you can drive a truck through.
Well, I mean, it's a start, right? I mean, what I'm hearing is management coverage and addressing the leadership aspect, you know what I mean, so people have, know who their leaders are, and we can provide a structure that's, it's managed effectively, it starts to dissipate noise and allows you to execute better, right?
Yeah.
So, we have twenty minutes.
What time is it?
Twelve.
Twelve forty-one.
High five.
So, you know, I'm going to go back to ATA, so these four points here, so we're, you're on the page ATA for operations, right, inspectional services coordinator, broadening their level of responsibility, I hear definitely a department assistant, we use, we don't use clerk anymore, department assistant, department assistant in the, either the Treasury or the accounting area to do payroll and to be that public facing person.
What do you think of a role like a budget and payroll analyst, and then that person can get involved more heavily in the budget creation process too, like a lot of the, you know, reporting for.
I think a financial analyst would be a great addition, however you want to title it.
And then task that person with payroll, you know, that's, he gets free the role, so.
Yeah, they'll have the ability, okay.
I was, I was a budget and payroll analyst on a former.
I, I think that's a good idea, I think you want to think about top titles like that, if you're going full-time with that job, if you're, if you can only afford part-time, keep it as a clerk to just get the payroll done and wait on.
Well, not a clerk, an assistant.
That's what I was going to say.
A project assistant. In terms of that type of financial analyst role, what, from municipal side, what opportunities are there, or is there any success with co-ops and things like that to bring, you know, higher education, people looking for an opportunity to get started, and while they're at school or not at school, start to build some of these things, does that, is that ever done? Because I think on the private side, it's done all the time.
Well, we do it with, I mean, we, we bridge some of those gaps with the senior volunteers there, but there's like a gap between those.
Financial analyst, I'm just visiting the financial phase, there's a lot of folks, and there's no push at the state level to drive more municipal, draw municipal talent in, so I didn't know if there's an opportunity from, to try to drive that from a.
But I would want that to like supplement what we're doing, like, like train a new analyst every year, like, you know, a person here for ten or eleven months, I don't want that to be our permanent solution.
No, no, but I think it also provides possible bench strength and also some, some, you know, additional resources at a, at a, a, a good cost-effective method.
Well, and visibility for the town as a place that you can come work, and that's another, another benefit, so.
Yeah.
De-college right down the way.
That's right.
Yeah, I, I've seen those done mostly to supplement, the only time I've seen interns be really effective to actually work steadily on, you know, and not have a lot of turnover is in engineering, you know, that's what you get kids from.
We have a whole department, and my company, that's all they do.
I just think in terms of project-based standpoint, the financial analysis standpoint, where it can get finite, structured sort of view of, hey, we might have a problem, we want something to look at, you bring in an intern with some skill sets that can really benefit.
Yeah, I did that in my last role, I needed, like, the bargaining agreements integrated, but they were all in scanned PDFs, and search your highlights. Please. Please.
So, so I see this kind of consensus here kind of shaping up ATA operations, department assistant, maybe department assistant that's a financial analyst if it's a full-time position of a financial analyst, any idea, the current HR coordinator being shifting her focus to benefits administration, recruitment and onboarding, and the inspectional IS coordinator. Okay, anything else on staffing?
Highway.
Well, and one of, I was thinking highway, as we've talked about in the past, but also the social services, if you will, how would that fit in, like, if you think about the social, COA, et cetera, how does that roll up into the structure, would that be an ATA, would that be a?
So right now, social services for us would be COA and library.
And, I don't know, parks and recreation.
The rec part of park.
Rec part, yeah.
The rec part.
The parks.
Need versus facilities.
But, uh, wait a minute.
Yeah.
Well, they presented that.
Right, you're, you're talking about the maintenance of the parks going to facilities that doesn't, we don't have a facility, so.
Right, I want a facility.
Yeah, I know.
Well.
We need a facility.
If repetitive messaging.
Yeah, I know, I don't disagree.
I think I remember writing a report that recommended that, but, yeah.
That's.
We even had, we even had the shell of a building that we could finish to house those.
Well, right, so, but like, this ATA person, that, that's the, would be handling the building facilities, a rate portion of all, not, you know, directing the facilities portion or the DPW portion of all of this, right? It's that, you're saying that's operations, it's the Jeremy, whoever's handling rec separately or whatever, rolling up to Jeremy's side of the house, not to the TA's side of the house, right, so.
I don't know, I'm asking the question, I just want to kind of clarify where that rolled up.
So operations in your view would include inspectional services, planning, public works, highway and park maintenance and facilities?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't want to make it.
The ATA span of control is not huge.
That's what I'm, yeah, I wouldn't want to make it, you know, fifty, like half and half.
Right.
But what's left is public safety, so you can kind of roll a highway into public safety side of things rather than operations, and then the whole finance piece.
So we're missing a third person?
Yeah, I don't, I don't think I'm.
I'm not as convinced we need public works as a thing as opposed to highway, so, you know, I don't know if you, I, when I just think about now, do we, do we need to consolidate to public works, I don't know, I think we went ahead to the highway surveyor.
Yeah.
Why does that need to change? I think parks is a different animal, because I think, I think rec, the, the programming should go over to the Parks Commission, I think the maintenance of the recreational fields and facilities, which are part of the capital inventory, should stay within whatever we're doing here, does that make sense?
I don't know how you, we have to put some structure in place to push rec to the, to the committee, to the board, right?
Well, I mean, you've got a Parks Director, right, and they've developed programming, and whether or not how the budget works, I don't know.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about, is just how much control there is in that area over budgeting right now with one person, so you have to figure out how to split that out.
I think most of the budgeting in the parks falls into the operations aspect of what parks does, the ideas of.
And also keep it.
And on the, the evolving, revolving account.
Well, that's, that's the other big piece, a few years ago, what happened is, you know, they passed it at a town meeting, made a pretty big change in, you know, the revolving fin, how much finance they had available and their whole budgeting piece, that would have to be revisited too, but if we did that, I think you would find some, some room in the finances to make some of that a reality more easily.
Because it wouldn't be such a large revolving lump sum?
Well, because that lump, lump sum would have some more flexibility in that it could be built into the budget, we could do some planning, which was the argument at the time.
That makes sense.
And, and, and to their, you know, to their defense, because they were against it, because a couple of years before that, we just closed the beach for the whole summer because we had no money, and their argument was that they were running this program and they wanted the money to go into that program so they could continue to run things, and our argument is, well, there are some things that are, that are more vital, and they're, you know, they're right or wrong, said, well, we don't care about that, we want to make sure that our mission keeps going on the way that we were elected to make it happen.
And when we were compartmentalized, I guess it made sense, but we're trying to bring this back.
Exactly.
Single government, yeah.
That's right.
Trying to stay positive, Brendan. So everybody can go home and sleep now, if everybody's feeling great. Everybody's feeling great?
Okay, so ATA for operations, department assistant, analyst, benefits coordinator, inspection services coordinator, separate park maintenance from recreation programs, right?
All right.
That's an idea, not a, I don't think there's consensus on that last.
Yeah, I mean, I feel like, yeah, dude. Are we getting home with that?
I think all of these are, are to explore.
Right. It's a, it's a question, yeah.
I mean, the, the recreation park has a whole, a huge number of seasonal employees and, and, you know, because they run the whole summer camp, which is actually, I consider vital for the town.
I agree.
Yeah, because I mean, my kids go there and have lots of guys who are screwed for lack of furniture, so I think it's important.
Like every kid.
Yeah, pretty much. It's a great program and it, and it's, it's basically self sustaining, you have fun. And then on the other side, we've got seasonal landscape crew that does the mowing. And then where the gaps are, we have the park director basically mowing, those guys hanging around, so.
To me, that's your biggest problem with park maintenance is you've got, you know, it's seasonal is, it doesn't include April and May, right?
Yeah.
So the park director is spending.
Is on the mower.
Is on the mower. I mean, we all know how much it rains in April and May and how much the grass grows, right? He's on the mower, he's maintaining his field for April and May, he's, you've lost him.
That speaks to making sure the role is allowed to do the job they're hired for, and that's not mowing the lawn, right?
Correct.
Completely moved up to like a facilities.
That's what, that's, that's exactly what I was getting at.
Wow, where'd you come up with that?
Well, I mean, even, even.
Even if you just, even if you just put another, another worker in the public works department and said, hey, you're, you're mowing.
Yeah, well, we didn't have a public works department.
Oh, the highway department.
Yeah, even if it's only to cover the gap, you know?
Right.
Where would that, where, where would that, something that, I mean, I could see facilities actually being managed through the inspectional, inspection services.
Was it most typical to be in the highway department or some public works department?
Yeah, it's most typical, most typically, it's most typically in a public works department. I've seen people trying to do it in inspection services. It's, it's highly dependent on the personnel you have in inspection service. Some building commissioners would say, yeah, I'd love to do that, others would say, no, not my job, to manage your facility.
It's a mixing of contexts.
Yeah.
Some people are.
I think you gotta be careful of, here I am saying you need a senior management team, but you're at a tipping point of creating too much management if you start, well, let's create a public works department. This, you know, it's good, you're starting to get talk heavy, honestly.
Yeah, I, it's a, it's a good point.
Just gotta be careful of it. Plus one facilities department.
Yeah, we, we need one, I mean.
Hey, why don't we add a facilities department?
Well, pre, the previous. The facilities job previously and Jeremy's predecessor was in express job description of the TA, which is. We need a department.
I should want to do that too.
Who took care of facilities with the sheriff's department?
I had a assistant superintendent for maintenance and he had a staff of fire safety, genetic oil, laundry, maintenance of probably thirty people. And reported up to CFL.
Did you say I was going to jail?
Yeah.
How could I have been laundry in the jail?
Yeah, fire suppression.
And fire suppression, right, right.
Facilities are either, they're either standalone departments or they're in town, it's most towns, be the standalone departments or they're tied to public works. They're, you know, there aren't a lot of.
Oh, I'm fine with facilities being a standalone. I keep highway and facilities as two standalone departments.
I feel like that's what, that's what we've been told is wanted in the past.
In my previous two municipalities, facilities was within the mayor's office, there was a facilities manager in the mayor's office, and then in Brookline, there was a building and maintenance department, so it did both the kind of inspection stuff and then it had folks focused on town buildings.
So the ATA. The other reason is we do have, we do have on the south end of town, this, these water pipes that belong to the town. And when they do have break, it's, it's a hard show.
The town needs some oversight of facilities, of its structures, infrastructure, fields, et cetera.
Correct. And that feeds into that plan too.
They own the assets, right?
Exactly.
When you're talking about facilities, are you talking about, you know, vertical facilities, buildings, or are you talking about all infrastructure?
I'm leaning more toward, well, I mean, I mean, would you include fields as infrastructure?
No, I would include fields as part of buildings, yeah.
Okay.
It's typically done that way, buildings and.
You would say infrastructure that's not current. Our biggest challenge is we've got infrastructure that doesn't have a direct ownership, accountability, water pipes, it's a water commission, yes, but operationally, there's no ownership or accountability, how do you get things done?
The water department has contracted, the water department has contracted with Whitewater, a company that, that does the testing and does, and oversees it, and if there is a break, they get called and Dan goes with them. And the highway department also, you know, so there is, there's a process in place, but there is no department to really manage it, so I mean, there's an elected board, you know, but it's, it is, it's problematic.
Okay, when you say infrastructure too, I think about culvers, things like that, and that brings us over to the, the highway, right?
Right, that's right. And all of this, you know, infrastructure, you know, when you start talking about infrastructure, you start thinking about, you start thinking about water, you start thinking about storm drain, and you're thinking of roads and parks and bridges, that's when people start thinking, we need a public works department.
And there's also the piece of stormwater management and legislation that's in place that we, we really have to address, which I, I don't think that we have fully addressed in the public works.
I look at it from, there's, there's things that we need to take care of and maintain and understand, whether from statutory or a make sense standpoint, we just need to have direct lines of accountability of who in town is responsible. So there are gaps. So when I think of some of the public works, public works is an overarching construct organization that allows you to say that you own it. But within that, we've already identified ownership of certain things. The question is, do we grow that or do we just identify the gaps that are currently not owned and, and address that through some, something? And it could be public works.
I think we have to.
I think we went down the path of not going public works with our initial step, so part of it is like, we, we've got someone tangling to do potentially.
True.
Question is, that to me is not near term, I think facilities is a near term, is it a gap? Where there's a gap, I want to fill it, I guess is my point.
You, you have a water commission, you have a highway. If you start filling the gaps with more committees or more departments, your, it's ten reports becomes fifteen, right?
We've already cut that in half, you gotta remember.
Well, you know.
I don't know, I mean, I kind of, I understand the point, but I also want to make a point that we're, we're addressing that, and you don't want to go all too high, maybe that is public works, which is fine, I mean, I, I had my own thoughts a long time ago and it had public works in there for sure. But where we are today, and it didn't have an ATA then, we have an ATA now, I say to myself, can we re, am I rethinking what I'm thinking? Yeah.
You don't have an ATA yet.
We're in select for it, if we say we have an ATA.
We don't have a public works department yet either, so it's all in the ether.
It's one, all right. Bye Brendan.
I think we got a pretty good list of.
Yep.
Things to focus on, right? At, at this point. Your ATA, your department, this is gonna, this is gonna take some, some doing to get this done. Maybe the park and, the park and recreation piece, and it is, you have an elected park and recreation commission, but really not under your jurisdiction, maybe you just set that aside, you know, because you've got so much else to focus on and, you know, you know, it might be, you know, you can't do everything, it's typically if you don't have ultimately responsible for it. You need to shore up your policies. And the facilities questions, they, they're an open question, I kind of think we've got a, we've got a plan today about that.
All right, well, then, I would move to adjourn, right, because we, do we have to adjourn right when he leaves or?
He's still on form.
I'm okay, cool, I move to keep going. Have fun soccer.
I guess my question to you, David, would be like, okay, so we, it seems like, like coalesced around some ideas, I guess, what kind of timeline can we set up for this, like, what, like, we're really good at figuring out what we want to do and then, like, we need, like, to hold ourselves to getting to, to the, the thing.
Right. Well, I think, I would, the way I would divide this up is what, what things are on this list going to take money and what, which ones aren't going to take money, right? So your policies don't cost anything, right? You, you have, I think you have enough information to develop a set of financial policies and get them adopted, you know, the next quarter, I don't know. Maybe six months at the, at the, at the latest. These other, these other issues, or maybe your, your inspection service coordinator isn't, isn't a money issue, right? They were, they, they were hired to be that, their job description includes everything you want, right, all right?
There's a bifurcation of the hours and I'm not sure of the exact split, but it was health admin for some portion and the other subset was to do inspection services coordination, so, yeah, it would just be formalizing what an order chart looks like, bringing that group together, explaining it.
Eventually that might.
Is any union?
No.
No, that's a non-union.
But I wouldn't, I thought they were specific hours stated Jack's role in the latest CBA. I think that role isn't, we should double check. I could be wrong.
Maybe half of it.
We're, we're a little messy here, but we're not that messy.
Oh, so you think he's in the town hall union?
Yep.
And these three, these three budget issues, right? The ATA, department analyst.
Department assistant analyst, and, well, you've got the benefit coordinator.
I mean, we do have, we do have, the, the issue is if we just let.
Oh, yeah.
Do a role that she was that hired, and then we just move the payroll back into.
Payroll, right, you need a position.
Yeah, well, we, we, I think we do have a position.
We want a re-titled position.
Yeah, because we have, we do have, we have, we do have, right now, we only have a treasurer collector, we have an assistant treasurer collector and we have a clerk that was the previous, now I don't know how that fits.
It's still funded in the budget?
I don't know if it was funded in twenty five. Assistant treasurer collector, of course, was, but that is in the union, so you have to be careful about making those job duties and assigning it to a position that, or we have this position, one or the other.
I know the clerk was in the budget too.
If the clerk position is in the budget but not funded and you have.
Clerk was part time, so I don't think so.
If the clerk position's in the budget and it's, it's in the budget, but it's not funded and you've got so many vacancies and you should have some breakage to be able to pay for one, it's just a matter of whether you think you're going to get it funded in next year's budget, right? So you might be able to act on that more quickly.
Right, from a planning perspective, everything that's monetarily is budget related, the answer to your question, Laiman, should we put a target for ATM to say, we need to sort this all out, understand the financial implications of this structure, and if we can institute things sooner than later, we will as we go.
How do we get people into the capital plan?
We don't, because it's not capital.
I know, but like into the overall.
We just build it to budget.
Well, I think what you need to do with this is one, like, so we're, we're probably going to do a comp, not probably, because we told people we would do a comp class study, right? A role in that comp study has to be an ATA now, because we want to know what will that cost us, right? But to me, we've got to refine what's here in terms of a end state vision of this is where we're going, we have to assess the monetary implications of these positions within the current budget as it relates to the future budget, and it's a, it's a nine month process now, because we've got to be ready for May, unless we choose to defer any changes. But if you want a timeline.
Yeah.
Let's make May our end state and then we back into.
Right, so.
What we need to do, right?
Right, for the next budget cycle.
I think you need to let Jeremy try to build these roles into the budget, see where he gets, right? You have to see if you can, can you build those in the budget, if, you know, and what in, in order to build the budget, what, what, what's your gap, what's your budget gap to be able to fund those?
At that point though, David, is are we in agreement that those are the only roles we're planning attending, attempting to address in this budget cycle?
You had also talked about a.
Facilities, we talked about. You know what I mean, so I mean, an end state vision, even if it's dotted lines, conceptual, it's, this is what we think we've agreed to today. Here's the unknown, what it looks like today, highway, what it could look like tomorrow, public works, whatever, you know what I mean? But I think we need to kind of take all these ideas and kind of get it to a point where we can say, this is where we're going, eventually. We're firm here, we're not so firm here.
I mean, you know, the other thing we didn't mention, maybe intentionally, you know, right now, with Jack doing his role of worker for board of health, you know, trash isn't part of that, and we had talked about moving trash into public works, and we've got the guy who's inspection services, right, who's already handling that right now.
And you're going to get some pushback from the health agent if we propose moving trash, solid waste out of board of health?
I didn't know we were.
Well, I'm not, we had discussed it at one point, it just, I just.
I know we talked about moving into, making it a, a, move it into the tax bill so everybody.
Right.
But that's different than moving it into public works.
Well, part of it was, but part of it was, that, that was, that was part of the discussion at one point, was making a public works piece, although I, I'm not sure really why it matters because it's a contracted service anyways, so.
Sure.
You know.
Yeah, I mean, it's.
But the big piece was putting it into the, you know, putting it into the tax bill.
Doesn't it kind of address that, the way we manage the costs now, so only the, the people that are paying for the service are getting the benefit of any sort of shortage or overage?
Yeah, they pay the town payments, they're different now, they're not included in this.
It used to be built into it and now it's in your budget.
Right.
It's in each department's budget. It used to be that all of it, oh, okay, we don't need to believe that point.
A lot, yeah.
Is it an enterprise fund? If it's an enterprise.
Yeah, but what was, what was happening is all of the different town departments, facility, heading to either dumpsters or in trash cans or whatever would be picked up, and that was all funded through the tax, through the trash bill.
But you can opt out.
So the people who opted out, so the people who walked it out weren't actually paying for the town's disposing of some trash. So now what we did was we changed it so that those costs are built into each department's budget, so it's not just the rate payers that are paying for it.
Right.
Everybody's paying for the town departments disposing. And then we tightened it up where some of them that just had dumpsters didn't need them, now they just have trash grounds by everybody else.
Yes, you asked me to look at trends and the trend is for public, for public works to do solid waste, right? That's the trend.
And that's what I was talking.
But it's not, it's not a necessity, but that is the trend.
I mean, that addressed the recycling currently, this is highway now, so that's part of that.
Well, recycling should be, you know, just by the solid waste.
Well, you know, I mean, that, he oversees, you know, he oversees that person, but it's still a, still a board of health thing.
Operationally.
Yes, with highway.
Right. Yeah, that's sort of, that's our challenge in some ways, is it's the operational, practical operational component of managing, the execution, and then there's the. And then there's the, you know, elected board and appointed board oversight of the program. That's our challenge, marriage, you know, design standpoint. A lot of dotted lines in this town, that's what I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm often, I try to be always conscious, but people having two supervisors is not ideal. Right, I want it to be, I don't want the person to work for highway, but actually it's a board of health, like, who's your boss?
Yeah, you should have one boss.
Right.
Yeah, all right. But then I would, I mean, I would, I would want all the direct operational town employees working up through the TA. I do not want elected boards managing personnel, honestly.
And we do have at least one case where we've got that org adjourned, it has both lines.
Yep. Yeah, Katie and I tried one and literally the assessor was like, well, is it dotted to me? Is it dotted to the board of assessors? Like, what's?
Yeah, well, the, the answer was, in a, in a way, it was in a letter that one of the current, um, assessors wrote when he was the chair of the select board, was that statutorily, principal assessor reports to the, to the elected board of assessors. But day-to-day, um, duties and operations, they report to, you report to the town administrator.
And the assessor being part of the bargaining unit at the time was a challenge in this.
We have, we have a council agent director who is part of a bargaining unit and then she has a staff member who's non-union. That's backwards.
Yeah, that is kind of what's, yeah.
Because she's part-time, obviously she was part-time.
I think she's, she's, is she full-time now, in COA?
She's full-time, she should have been put in though.
Thirty-seven and a half, I think, Brian.
Yeah, she's, she's.
I think they're trying to expand her hours. I'm not sure they've got her full-time.
Yeah, that's what I.
She maybe was twenty about.
Yeah, so maybe that's what I'm.
Oh, that was in the budget discussion last year, now it all just flashback.
Definitely, I don't know. They're two, two different people, right? There's the, the outreach coordinator who is full-time and then there's the assistant who's not full-time.
And the average burden unfortunately on China.
Okay.
So on that, in that issue, you know, board of assessors, you know, somebody else's employee like that. Um, that's where your personnel policies come into play, right? Personnel policies need to be followed, whether you're appointed by the board of select, the, the select board or the board of assessors or the tax commission. And the person responsible for, uh, managing the policies is the town administrator. So that's how you square that circle.
Well, that sounds. It's a swearing.
So did I answer, do we get a good place on the timeline?
Well, so I guess I'm wondering if we can be more specific, so that I know the personnel policy is something that you've been working on. Do, do you have a timeline in mind already?
So the, the financial policies will be quicker because they're more up to date. Personnel policies, you know, there's, there's just statutory stuff needs to be updated, so. Um, financial policies will be first, but the personnel policies. I can remember, I'd like to do it in this calendar year. I'd like to get it to you. That is my goal.
Okay.
Out loud recorded goal.
Sound like.
We now have a goal.
All right, so financial, so personnel policy, you're saying like maybe December?
Yeah, so financial policy November, personnel policy December.
Okay.
Great.
And then that we would be voting, ideally, we would be voting on each of those, is it, okay.
Yeah, and rather than the kind of building up the select board policies that, you know, and procedures and one document that, um, we're working on, this will be more of a, here's the policy, you know, I can discuss it and give you feedback and I'll come back with a wholesale, like, here is the policy with the revisions. It won't be, um.
Piece-meal.
Yeah, in terms of the dates you just put down, would it be easier for you to say by end of calendar year, both policies will be updated that way? Because you've kind of, you put a very specific.
Right.
Order of operations in front of yourself.
Right.
I, I mean, I would be comfortable with end of year for both policies.
Yeah.
How you choose to deliver them to us.
Okay.
There's a lot of holidays.
Right, also, also, yeah, a lot of stuff leading up to the special town meeting.
The special town meeting, right.
Middle of November.
So I'm not sliding the dates, I'm just giving flexible.
Right, right, well.
Give yourself to January to get it, because December's a tough one. You've got a special time meeting coming.
But you can, you can update us, you can, you can update us along the way, yeah.
If I, we need to move it, sure, but it would be my, it would be my goal calendar year to get them presented to the board. You know, by the time you go through two meetings worth of, you know, feedback or something, you know.
And then in terms of addressing the.
Presented to the board.
Not in this final format.
That's great.
And then in terms of addressing the, the positions that are going in the budget, you'll work on that through the budget process and that will come.
Yeah, that will, that will be tied. So we'll hear that like, after the, after you get the input from the departments and you work stuff together, so. We'll see that in the January, February timeframe.
And potentially also the, the, like, you know, compensation study, so that, I mean, that would feed into this also, right? There would be potentially new, new rules, so, yeah.
I did want, yeah, when you talk about, you're not going to get a compensation classification plan done in a couple of months.
Yeah, but also I had, I think it said seven months.
Yeah, so, and.
All right.
Yeah, so.
So those, those, some of that might still be somewhat unknown in the spring then? Maybe, yeah, I mean, educated guesses, not, not from the.
Depending on when you start the compensation plan and who's doing it for you and you're going to go through a process to select a consultant, what are you going to, what are you going to try to do to get to the point of actually starting a class, you know, plan?
I, I have a proposal from the Collins Center.
Oh, okay.
That, um, you know, because that's the, my quickest procurement method, um, and you answered.
That's our big advantage.
So, uh, it will be in the package on Wednesday.
They, they, seven months is, is a good timeframe. Um, if the information we need, we get in a timely manner, right? And I've done a number of class and comp studies and usually the holdup is getting information in a usable format from the town in timely, you know, and getting things reviewed. We do job descriptions and they need to be reviewed and edited and, um, that's usually typically the holdup.
So digging the job descriptions, last time we met.
Yeah.
The 2015 study that the Collins Center did gave us a, hey, a number of job descriptions based on the study. You were going to see if you could dig those up for us, because we're not sure which version. We were thinking, let's start with a 2015 to see what we have recommended versus maybe what's up there on SharePoint. If you could dig those up, that might give us a good base to understand.
Because there was a class of comp done in 2015, right?
Yep.
I think I, you get that.
Thank you.
The problem is the older study, we, we, we're now all on OneDrive. So everything's in OneDrive, unless it's done before a certain date, then it's.
Yeah.
Who knows where it's.
We have to find it. It's a best, if you have it, that'd be helpful, otherwise we're, we're putting together. We probably have multiple versions of job descriptions of the same title on SharePoint. So it's always a question of which is the right one to start with.
Yeah.
That's something our HR department should find some time to work on.
And I'll also send you the, uh, the HR bottom of 2016.
Great.
Be good to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn. Second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Thank you all very much.
One twenty.